We can pass it around if you need to say anything. All right, six oh one, we're going to call the voting session to order. Everybody could please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, free of religion, and of all law.
Thank you. Mr. McGinley?
Present.
Mr. Mitchell? Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Thornton?
Here.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Mr. Lovett?
Here.
Mr. Rado?
Here.
All present? Attorney skin, do you want to announce the executive session?
Yes. For this meeting, we had an executive session concerning personnel matters, one matter having to do with the contracts for the district attorney's office and the DA's office. And the other one had to do with personnel matter relating to emails received by counsel this week.
Thank you, Attorney skin. Any deletions from the voting session agenda?
I'd like to make a motion, if I may, in that regard.
Sure.
I'd like to remove the last thing on our agenda, which is number ten, and move it to the work session.
Second.
Second.
Roll call on that. Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Los Gavage?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Rado?
Yes.
You know. Okay, that'll be moved.
I'd like to make a motion to remove item number eight, section D, the Zern County Redevelopment Authority, because the only member that is on the application list will be moving in a year.
Item A, second.
Yes.
We have a motion in a second. Can we have a roll call on that? Mr. Los Gavage?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Rado?
Yes.
Any other deletions?
Motion to accept the agenda with the amendments made.
Sure, the amendments are ten, is moved to work session, eight D is removed.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. All favor?
Aye.
Extentions opposed? Agenda is adopted. We now have public comment on voting session agenda items only. Nope. Mr. Griffin?
Oh, non-agenda, please.
You're not agenda, got it. Amy Bezek?
I think that's on the next one.
Okay.
That's why we're questioning marks.
Sure, sure, sure. Diane Kamen? Next one. Michelle McKidditch, next one. Anybody for this agenda? This voting agenda? Okay, I do have one. Okay, there's one online, but I have a, I'll read this quickly. Uh, this is from Walter and Robin Tiltchen, Dallas Township. The first one is on number five. If you approve the Election Integrity Grant funding, which was to improve our election process, we the people expect you to hold those in election administrative positions responsible and accountable. Undeniably, the twenty twenty two November eighth midterm election was a complete mess and far from being improved. We the people want to know exactly how you're holding the Bureau of Elections accountable and responsible to increase security on election systems, optimize poll worker training, and implement strategies to enhance pre-camerasing and canvassing processes as they indicated they intend to do. Um, the next one is says it's on ten, which we removed, so that was the only one. Mr. Raybo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, with respect to the transportation study, uh, I would like to know if, uh, the county manager and the county engineer intend to explore options with that transportation study in the usage of the, uh, LSA infrastructure money and the, uh, federal DOT raise grant and all other grant options like the state, uh, portion of the ARP money with respect to bridge funding. So that way it, it frees up, as I stated in previous meetings, that it would free up the counties, uh, the LSA, uh, infrastructure money and the county's portion of the ARP funds. I think this is necessary because that way it maximizes the leverage that the council and, uh, the county manager has to seeking, uh, the, uh, other funding opportunities, which would allow for, uh, paving of more county roads, which would improve public safety. Also, with respect to, uh, the other item on the agenda, which is the, uh, unions, uh, for the, um, uh, district attorney and the public defender's office. As I said previously, many times over, that there should be, uh, a negotiation between the court, uh, staff funding with the court administrator, AOPC, and the state with respect to the funding for the court staff, which would free up money, which would allow to pay for the public defender's office. Because this is unsustainable, as I said. When you have a five point six percent increase of the cost of living average that happened at the end of twenty twenty one, that was put on all sixty seven counties. That is unfair to the counties, and also it is not co- a constitutional obligation of the counties. It is the state that funds the court system, not the counties. Check out Article nine, section three of the state constitution, and it's very clearly stated, just like the Commonwealth Court made the, uh, case last week with regards to school funding. Madam Chair, uh, I have one question with regards to the, uh, Pennsylvania Historical Museum Commission Keystone Grant. I asked, uh, is that going to be for, uh, for the codification or is it going to be for something else? Because I know that there's a grant for codification through the Historical Museum Commission, and I think the county should explore that, considering that codification, uh, funding has been, uh, has been long talked about by previous councils. Uh, that's all I have, Madam Chair. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Raybo. Any other members in the public that wish to speak on agenda items? Okay, hearing that, we'll move on.
Motion to move the approved minutes of the January twenty fourth meeting.
All favor?
Aye.
Extentions opposed? Amendments approved? Now we have uh, number one, motion to adopt resolution approving a contract with Excalibur Insurance Management Services LLC as third party administrator for Luzerne County's workers' compensation insurance for fiscal years twenty three, three, point, point, five. Okay, I think Mr. Lombardo is the first, and I thought Matt. That's how I heard it. Mr. Mitchell, Lombardo, Mitchell? Okay, roll call. Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Los Gavage?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell? Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Rado?
Yes.
Motion passes. Number two, motion to introduce ordinance amending Luzerne County zoning map to rezone one parcel property to a line point eight two seven acres in Houstown Borough from LI Light Industrial District Zone to R two, two family residence district.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Los Gavage?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell? Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Rado?
Yes.
Motion passes. Number three, motion to adopt resolution authorizing agreement with Lackawanna County to produce joint transportation studies and authorizing a hundred and fifty thousand dollar total budget over two years for a project consultant.
So move.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell? Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Los Gavage?
Yes.
Mr. Rado?
Yes.
Motion passes. Number four, motion to introduce ordinance amending the twenty twenty three fiscal year budget for Luzerne Counties for the opioid grant.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call. Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell? Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Los Gavage?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Mr. Rado?
Yes.
Number five, motion to introduce ordinance amending the twenty twenty three fiscal year budget for Luzerne Counties for the election integrity grant.
So move.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell? Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Los Gavage?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Rado?
Yes.
Motion passes. Number seven, motion to approve resolution approving the collective bargaining agreement between Luzerne County and the Teemsters Local Union, number four oh one.
So move.
Second.
Question, question?
Sure.
Another question, uh, with the agreement, the collective bargaining agreement with the Teemsters Local four oh one, this agreement with the public defender's office and district attorney's office. I had a couple issues with it. As I stated earlier in our meeting, uh, for one, the contract calls for part-time, uh, starting rates of forty thousand per year versus the full-time starting rate of sixty thousand five hundred dollars. And, you know, if you base that part-time on a twenty hour work week, that, and I, they may work more, I'm not sure, but, uh, that would be forty dollars an hour. The full-timers equates to about thirty dollars an hour. And I don't think that's fair to the full-timers. But, and I know a lot of them work much longer than forty hours a week. So that's one issue I had. Second issue I had with the contract is uh, we've given the part-timers, uh, health insurance, just as if they were full-timers. And, uh, I know we have only six total employees that fall in that group. But I, I, I just, I've worked a lot of places in my life, and I've never heard of part-timers receiving health insurance. So I had a problem with that. The last thing I wanted to say was the motion reads that, uh, it's for county council to approve the collective bargaining agreement. I have not received a copy of the collective bargaining agreement. I received, uh, verbal highlights of it, but I like to read the contract before I vote in favor of it, so, you know, I just, uh, have a problem with that, not receiving the contract. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. We have a first and a second. Do we have a roll call?
Uh, another question.
Sure.
I think someone has to give the highlights of the contract. So the public knows what we're voting on.
Do you need anybody to bring them with them? He's not here, no. I can, I can read it all. Okay. So this is what we discussed in executive session, the, uh, the contract, the first article, um, is for wages. Um, they're, they're listed at three percent for twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six. Um, but they are steps that we received. Um, so we can make this, we'll make this available, um, to the public on the, on the website, so they can take a look at the steps. Um, number two is Article twenty-eight, um, was amended to reflect a four-year term beginning on January first, twenty twenty-three, and expiring eleven fifty-nine PM on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Also, section sixteen twenty, um, that was the parties agree that section sixteen twenty rights will be preserved in the successor agreement as set forth in the contract that expired uh, in the end of twenty twenty-two and to the full extent permitted by the law. And then FMLA, uh, was changed, exhibit four, the Family Network Levy Act policy set forth, and exhibit four of the successor agreement will be amended to permit employees to protect one week's vacation time. We have a motion in a second. Clear? We'll call that, please. Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
No.
Mr. Urban?
No.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Los Gavage?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Rado?
Yes.
Motion passes. Number seven, motion to approve resolution authorizing the county manager to apply for the Pennsylvania Historical Museum Commission's Keystone Grant.
So move.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Perry?
Yeah.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Los Gavage?
Yep.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yeah.
Mr. Rado?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, we are going to move on to the nominations and appointments to authorities. Council, I think you, uh, were familiar with the process, uh, but we'll go ahead, we'll have to open nominations, make the nomination, close nominations, uh, vote for your nominee, and then the resolutions will prove that nominee. Quick little overview. So here we go. Uh, we have the Luzerne County Convention Center Authority, we have motion open nomination.
Motion.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
All sanctions opposed, nominations are open.
I can nominate Donna Kapinski.
Second Venus.
What the nominee is, or do you?
Hold on.
Okay, so we have a motion for Kapinski by, uh, Mr. Lombardo, who seconded that. Second, okay.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Dino below.
Second, period.
Any other nominations? Sure.
Second.
Leanne, did you say something, Mr.?
I was going to say I'd like to nominate Lynn Barnes.
Barnes.
What was that?
She nominated Barnes.
Okay.
Second.
Motion to close nominations.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Extentions opposed, nominations are closed. Okay, so now we have three terms, they all end on the same, um, date, twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-seven. Um, so we'll go around and state, um, your nominee.
One at a time.
One at a time. So, council, I'm not, um, telling you what to do, but as you, if you remember, so example, if you're, I won't use one of their names, so for not to be biased. If someone's saying, yeah, if someone's saying John Doe and your choice is Smith, but you also want John Doe to have one, if that's where it's headed, you know, use that, because we have to get to a majority. Cool, all right. Mr. Thornton?
Donna Kapinski.
Mr. Urban?
Barnes.
Mr. Lovett?
Ms. Kapinski.
Mr. Venus?
Ms. Kapinski.
Mr. Los Gavage?
Donna Kapinski.
Mr. Lombardo?
Donna Kapinski.
Ms. McDermott?
Donna Kapinski.
Mr. McGinley?
Mr. Gualle.
Mr. Mitchell? Mr. Perry?
Donna.
Mr. Rado? Ms. Kapinski? Nine for Kapinski. One for Lala, one for Bart. Sorry, so Ms. Kapinski, uh, is our first one. So now what's left, we have Galala, Patty, and Bart. Roll call. Mr. Urban?
Are you roll call, or are you?
Your vote, your vote, sorry.
Barnes, yeah.
Barnes? Mr. Lovett?
Mr. Gualle.
Mr. Venus?
Gualle.
Mr. Los Gavage?
Barnes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Galala.
Ms. McDermott?
Barnes.
Mr. McGinley?
Mr. Gualle.
Mr. Mitchell?
Mr. Barnes.
Mr. Perry?
Mr. Galala.
Mr. Thornton?
Mr. Galala.
Ms. Rado?
Galala.
Yep. All right, Galala reached a majority. So next we have Patty or Bart. Whenever you're ready. Mr. Lovett?
Mr. Patty.
Mr. Venus?
Ms. Barnes.
Mr. Los Gavage?
Lynn Barnes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Uh, Mr. Patty.
Ms. McDermott?
Barnes.
Mr. McGinley?
Mr. Patty.
Mr. Mitchell?
Barnes.
Mr. Perry?
Mr. Patty.
Mr. Thornton?
Mr. Patty.
Mr. Urban?
Uh, Ms. Barnes.
Mr. Rado? Patty? Five for Bart, six for Patty. Yep. Okay, uh, so. Patty? It's gotten to the majority. Okay, so, yeah. Oh, yeah, six, five. All right. So we have three, our three, Kapinski, Galala, and Patty. Um, we'll have to do the resolutions one at a time. So the first one is, uh, do we have a motion for Ms. Kapinski? Roll call. Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Los Gavage?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell? Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Ms. Rado?
Yes.
Congratulations, Ms. Kapinski. Next one for Galala.
Motion move. For Mr. Gualle.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Los Gavage?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell? Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Ms. Rado?
Yes.
Next is for Patty?
Motion for Patty, Mr. Patty.
Second.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell? Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Los Gavage?
Yes.
Ms. Rado?
Yes.
Okay, congratulations to all three. We'll move on. Uh, next is the Luzerne County Flood Protection Authority. We have, uh, two on our list, and there's one term.
Motion to open nominations.
Second, motion opens.
All favor?
Aye.
All sanctions opposed, nominations are open.
I'd like to nominate James Delaney.
Okay, uh, Leanne, do you want to second it, because Mr. Thornton beat you to it?
Yes, I did not hear him, yes.
Okay. Yep. Thanks, Ms. McDermott. Any other nominations?
Motion move. Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Extentions opposed? Um, we could skip, we could skip right to the resolution.
Yes, we can.
Yeah. Okay, motion to, uh, appoint Mr. Delaney?
So move.
Second.
Roll call. Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yeah.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Gavage?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Ms. Rado?
Yes.
Uh, motion passes. Congratulations to Mr. Delaney. Next we have Luzerne County Housing Authority. We have two terms, one ending in twenty twenty. Oh, and, yeah, one regular term ending in twenty twenty-seven, and one resident term ending in twenty twenty-seven.
Motion open nominations.
Yeah, well, let's do the, do the regular term first.
Motion open nominations, second.
All favor?
Aye.
Extentions opposed, nominations are open for the regular term.
Motion for Ms. Yarmel?
Second Venus.
Any other nominations? All right, if not, do we have a motion to close nominations?
Motion.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Extentions opposed, we only have one nomination, so we can go right to the resolution. So for the first term, uh, for Yarmel.
Yes.
We need a motion in a second for the. I'm getting. She's quick, okay.
Second.
Mr. Urban? Okay, so we have a motion, second. Now, we have a roll call. Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell? Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Los Gavage?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Ms. Rado?
Yes.
Congratulations. Next we have the resident term?
Motion open. Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Extentions opposed, nominations are open.
Motion for Mr. Wonyo.
Second.
Mr. Lovett and Mr. Lombardo were closed. All right, there we go. Okay, so we have a motion in a second for Wonyo. He only wants, we have a motion to close nominations.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
All sanctions opposed, nominations are closed. Do we have a motion for the resolution for Wonyo?
Motion, second.
There we go. Roll call. Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Los Gavage?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Yes.
You know. Okay, next we have, uh, the Luzerne County Transportation Authority. We have one term ending in twenty twenty-seven.
Motion open. Second.
All favor?
Aye.
All sanctions opposed, nominations are open.
Can I just make a comment before we start, just so everybody's aware, everybody that has the word tentative after their name, they were all interviewed at the previous ABC, uh, meeting at four thirty, and they are all fine, so, yeah.
Motion for Mr. Seplo.
Second.
Any other nominations?
Motion to close.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Extentions opposed, we only have one, uh, nomination in one term, so do we have a motion for the resolution?
So move. Second.
Roll call.
Yeah.
Mr. Thornton.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Mr. Urban.
Yes.
Mr. Lovett.
Yes.
Mr. Venus.
Yes.
Mr. Liscavich.
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo. McDermott.
Yes.
Mr. McInley.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell. Ms. Rayo.
Yes. Okay, uh, congratulations, Mr. Seplo. Next, we're moving on to the nominations and appointments for boards and commissions, first one we have is the Conservation District Board of Directors with two terms ending in twenty twenty-six, do we have a motion over nominations?
Motion, second.
On favor?
Aye.
Absentions, opposed nominations are open.
I'd nominate Mr. Wilks. Second.
Who's that, Greg?
For conservation.
Yep.
Second.
Do we have a motion to close nominations?
So move. Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Absentions, opposed nominations are closed, what's that?
Sorry, my so.
No, you were first to close.
The close nomination.
Thank you.
Okay. Alright, so we have two terms and two nominees, so we'll do the resolutions for one individually, uh, first, uh, Mr. Wilks, the resolution.
Make a motion for Mr. Wilk and the second person who's.
Alright, it's the same term, so I believe we could do it at the same time, okay. Motion for both? Second for both?
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Thornton.
Yes.
Mr. Urban.
Yes.
Mr. Lovett.
Yes.
Mr. Venus.
Yes.
Mr. Liscavich.
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo.
Yes.
Ms. McDermott.
Yes.
Mr. McInley.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell. Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Ms. Rayo.
Yes. Okay, congratulations, Mr. Burger and Mr. Wilks, next we have the Loser County Arts Advisory Board, we have two terms, but they're separate, uh, one ending in twenty twenty-four, one ending in twenty twenty-six. Let's do the first one, uh, first, the twenty twenty-four term. Do we have a motion to open nominations?
Motion open.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Absentions, opposed nominations are open.
Armstrong. Second. Motion. Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Absentions, opposed, okay, so we have one nominee for the twenty twenty-four term, so we have a motion for the resolution for, uh, Mr. Armstrong.
Motion. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Urban.
Yes.
Mr. Lovett.
Yes.
Mr. Venus.
Yes.
Mr. Liscavich.
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo.
Yes.
Ms. McDermott.
Yes.
Mr. McInley.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Thornton.
Yes.
Ms. Rayo.
Yes. Okay, the twenty twenty-six term, do we have a motion to open nominations?
Motion. Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Absentions, opposed nominations are open.
I'd like to nominate Colleen Logan.
Second.
Do we have a motion to close nominations?
So move. Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Absentions opposed, nominations are closed, okay, we have the resolution for Ms. Logan for the twenty twenty-six term.
Motion.
Mr. Lovett.
Yes.
Mr. Venus.
Yes.
Mr. Liscavich.
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo.
Yes.
Ms. McDermott.
Yes.
Mr. McInley.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Thornton.
Yes.
Mr. Urban.
Yes.
Ms. Rayo.
Yes. Next we have, uh, Loser County Children's Youth Advisory Board, we have fifteen terms, all ending in twenty twenty-five, and we have three, um, on our eligibility list, we have motion to open nominations.
Motion, second.
On favor?
Aye.
Absentions, opposed nominations are open.
I'd nominate Mr. Robert Childs. Second.
Is it permissible to nominate all three, since there's fifteen?
Can I just make a comment on that? Uh, Mr. McInley. Uh, Mr. Myers is just seeing, uh, everyone's aware, is uniquely suited for, I believe, a different position.
Very good job.
Yeah. Um, the Drug and Alcohol Executive Commission, where he would serve as the student. Um, he also gave a very good interview for that, I think he would be an awesome candidate for that position. Um, so, I, I would respectfully ask that we don't nominate him for this one.
They'll not make the average two.
Okay.
Okay, well, we had one for Robert Childs, and we had a second, do we just have one for Amy Lowellhart?
Oh.
Roll call.
Okay, alright. Thank you. Do we have a motion?
We had Mr. Lovett and Mr. Liscavich, Childs, so we just want to do it, we can first and second that, for the two of them.
Good. Yeah.
Um, yeah, okay.
So that at this point.
Motion to close, and then we'll try to motion to close nominations.
Yeah.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Absentions, opposed nominations are closed. They're both the same, they're both the same term, do we have a nomination for both resolutions?
Yeah.
Nomination. Oh, yes. Motion to approve, uh, the two terms.
Thank you.
Give you two separate.
We just did it, we just did them together.
That was the nominations.
No, we didn't, we just did the resolutions, we could do them like this. We just did them, we just did it for the last term. Yeah, thank you.
So.
Mr. McGinley made the motion. Alright, thank you, roll call on both.
On both?
Yes. For the resolution.
Mr. Venus.
Yes.
Mr. Liscavich.
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo.
Yes.
Ms. McDermott.
Yes.
Mr. McInley.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Ray, excuse me, Mr. Thornton.
Yes.
Mr. Urban.
Yes.
Mr. Lovett.
Yes.
Ms. Rayo.
Yes.
You know.
Um, we need to pause for one moment, uh, a turn, uh, so yeah, I just. Walter Griffith is called point of order via text message, that we need to, uh, we need to state each nominee, we can't skip to the resolution. Is that, is that the case?
And in the beginning, you state them?
No, 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 like, you know how we're, uh.
In the past, we've been able.
We've done it like, we've, we've always done it like.
Yes. And that's, with no issue with anybody.
It's only an issue if there's more.
Yeah, that's different. Your accent.
Right, so even if there's only, no, he's saying, even if there's only one, like, there were, there were only one nomination, he's saying, we have to go through and say the name, so like, for Loser County Arts Advisory Board, Mr. Armstrong was the only one for twenty twenty-four, we skip right to the resolution, he's saying, we have to go around and say, all say his name. I don't think that's the case, but I'm not an attorney, so.
Let's combine those.
Okay. Okay.
Well, you guys, they've done it for years, huh?
Are we okay? We've always done this.
When there's only a limited number of candidates, we have more than enough, not positions, we've done it as a mass.
Ended the same term.
That's right.
Oh yeah, when they're different terms, we're doing them separately.
Yeah, so I mean, I don't know what's.
Everything's the same.
So only one candidate for one position, we don't need all go around saying that name.
Yeah, well, what he's saying is, you have to do the vote first and then vote on the resolution second. But because of the fact that you only have one person, one term, they're all the same, we went on to the resolution because we don't have any, uh, person to vote on, except for the one that was nominated.
Yeah.
But that, but that one person may not get the six votes. You're assuming that everybody's going to vote for that one person.
They vote no on the resolution then.
Section eight F two says, after nominations are completed, council shall conduct a roll call vote, in which each council member shall signify his or her selection by announcing a candidate's name. That's what it says in your bylaws.
Okay, we just, uh, we're, we're just gonna, we'll keep going, we'll, we'll move forward correctly, or however council wants to move forward, okay.
We strive to do that.
Okay, but this one does not apply, uh, I don't believe, well, let's see, we're, we were at the, um, the resolution. We do, we approve, we approve the resolution, we're done with the children and youth for both of them, and we're okay doing that. Alright, next we'll move on to the Loser County Community College Board of Trustees, one term ending in twenty twenty-eight.
Motion to open.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Absentions, opposed. Nominations are closed.
Like, no.
Open, sorry.
Like to nominate, uh, Mayor George Brown.
I'd like to nominate, um, Mr. William Lewis.
Second.
Who's that? Louis.
William Lewis.
Mr. Perry. Do we have motion to close nominations?
Motion.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Absentions, opposed. Okay, so now we have one term, so we'll do this just like we've always done, we'll do, call their names and they'll state your nominee.
So there's only one.
One opening, two names, Brown and Louis.
Mr. Liscavich.
William Lewis.
Mr. Lombardo.
Mr. Brown.
Ms. McDermott.
Mr. Brown.
Mr. McInley.
Mr. Brown.
Mr. Mitchell.
Mr. Brown.
Mr. Perry.
Mr. Lewis.
Mr. Thornton.
Mr. Lewis.
Mr. Urban.
Lewis.
Mr. Lovett.
Mr. Lewis.
Mr. Venus.
Mayor Brown.
Ms. Rayo.
Mr. Brown.
We have six for Brown, sorry, here, Louis.
Okay, it's, uh, it's George Brown, we have the resolution.
Motion to approve the resolution for Mr. Brown.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Lombardo.
Yes.
Ms. McDermott.
Yes.
Mr. McGinley.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Thornton.
Yes.
Mr. Urban.
Yes.
Mr. Lovett.
Yes.
Mr. Venus.
Yes.
Mr. Loosgavage.
Yes.
Mr. Radel.
Yes.
unanimous.
Okay, next we have the Loser County Convention Center and Visitors Bureau Board of Directors. We have four terms all ending in 2026.
Motion open nomination.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Abstentions opposed nominations are open.
I'd nominate Mr. Fisher.
Second.
I'd nominate Mr. Borwick.
Second.
I'd like to nominate Michael Ward.
Second.
I'll nominate Carl Fowler.
Second.
There are most of the nominations.
So moved.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Abstentions opposed nominations are closed. No, they're all the same term. Attorney, can you tell me how to proceed when I'm doing this correctly? Sorry, I got, I got into, I got into a flow and now I'm just making sure that we're doing things right. I don't want to. We have four and we have four. We should be able to just, we'll do them individually, that's fine, but is everybody okay with instead of stating nominees because we have four and there's four. And they're all the same term.
If we went around the room, like let's say you call out Thor. And I called out all four names and then you call on the next county person to call out all.
We were told a while ago we have to do that one at a time, for sure. Let's just do the resolutions one at a time. I'm comfortable moving forward that way if everybody else is. So do we have a motion for the resolution for Fisher?
Motion. Second. Support whichever one you want.
Roll call for Fisher.
Mr. McDermott.
Yes.
Mr. McGinley.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yeah.
Mr. Thornton.
Yes.
Mr. Urban.
Yes.
Mr. Lovett.
Yes.
Mr. Venus.
Yes.
Mr. Loosgavage.
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo.
Yes.
Mr. Radel.
Yes.
unanimous.
Motion for Borwick.
So, second.
Roll call.
Mr. McGinley.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell. Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Thornton.
Yes.
Mr. Urban.
Yes.
Mr. Lovett.
Yes.
Mr. Venus.
Yes.
Mr. Loosgavage.
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo.
Yes.
Mr. McDermott.
Boss.
Mr. Radel.
Yes.
unanimous.
Motion passes next for Ward.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Thornton.
Yes.
Mr. Urban.
Yes.
Mr. Lovett.
Yes.
Mr. Venus.
Yes.
Mr. Loosgavage.
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo.
Yes.
Mr. McDermott.
Boss.
Mr. McGinley.
Yes.
Mr. Radel.
Yes.
unanimous.
Fowler.
So, second.
Roll call.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Thornton.
Yes.
Mr. Urban.
Yes.
Mr. Lovett.
Yes.
Mr. Venus.
Yes.
Mr. Loosgavage.
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo.
Yes.
Mr. McDermott.
Boss.
McGinley.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell. Mr. Radel.
Yes. Congratulations to all four. Next we have Loser County Farmland Preservation Board.
Motion open nomination.
Second.
Sure, just so you know, we have two terms ending in 2025. Yep, two and two. All favor opening nominations, sorry.
Aye.
Abstentions opposed nominations are open.
I'd nominate Lakesley Masters.
Second.
I'd nominate Mr. Brian Mannes.
Second.
Motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
All favor. Abstentions opposed. Nominations are closed.
How many seconds you have?
You've got a lot.
Okay, so we have two and two, but we'll do them each individually. They're the same term, but first do we have the resolution for Lakesley Masters?
So, second.
Roll call.
Mr. Thornton.
Yes.
Mr. Urban.
Yes.
Mr. Venus.
Yes.
Mr. Loosgavage.
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo.
Yes.
Mr. McDermott.
Boss.
Mr. McGinley.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell. Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Radel.
Yes. Motion passes next, McManus.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Urban.
Yes.
Mr. Lovett.
Yes.
Mr. Venus.
Yes.
Mr. Loosgavage.
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo.
Yes.
Mr. McDermott.
Boss.
Mr. McGinley.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Thornton.
Yes.
Mr. Radel.
Yes.
unanimous.
Motion passes. Congratulations. Next we have Loser County 44 Airport Advisory Board. We have six terms ending in 2025. We have two people on our eligibility list. We have motion open nominations.
Motion.
All favor.
Aye.
Abstentions opposed nominations are open.
Motion nominate Mr. Michael Behr.
Sir.
I'd nominate Mr. David Semensky.
Do you have a motion to close?
So moved. Motion closed.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Abstentions opposed nominations are closed. We have two for the same term, but we'll do the resolution separately. Mr. Behrish.
Motion.
Roll call.
Mr. Lovett.
Yes.
Mr. Venus.
Yes.
Mr. Loosgavage.
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo.
Yes.
Mr. McDermott.
Boss.
Mr. McGinley.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Thornton.
Yes.
Mr. Urban.
Yes.
Mr. Radel.
Yes.
unanimous.
Semensky.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Venus.
Yes.
Mr. Loosgavage.
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo.
Yes.
Mr. McDermott.
Boss.
Mr. McGinley.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yeah.
Mr. Thornton.
Yes.
Mr. Urban.
Yes.
Mr. Lovett.
Yes.
Mr. Radel.
Yes.
Yes.
Congratulations. Next we have the Loser County Planning Commission. Five terms all ending in 2026 and we have five on our list.
Motion open nominations.
Second.
Actually four, right?
Oh, yep.
What's that?
Sorry, we only have four. Amy Lowell Hart was appointed to another board.
Motion nominate William Kane.
Okay, wait, motion to open nominations.
Yes.
Second, all favor.
Aye.
Abstentions opposed nominations are open. Go ahead, Mr. Venus.
All right, motion to nominate Mr. William Kane.
Second.
Nominate Mr. Marzico.
Second.
I'd nominate Mr. Leicher.
Second.
Motion to nominate Gary Schwartz.
Hold on. Leon's on to.
Oh, I didn't hear Leon.
Did you get it?
We can't hear you.
Oh, can you hear me now? I don't, I don't know why it's so quiet.
What did you say? Could you repeat it?
I have made a motion for Mr. Gary Schwartz. Can you hear me better now?
Okay, got it. Okay, so we have four. Do we have a motion to close?
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Abstentions opposed nominations are closed. Okay, so we have four nominees. We have five openings, but there's not a fifth there. So they're all the same term. They all end in 2026. We'll do the resolutions one at a time. First Kane.
So, second.
Roll call. Mr. Venus.
Mr. Thornton. Mr. Loosgavage.
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo.
Yes.
Mr. McDermott.
Boss.
Mr. McGinley.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Thornton.
Yes.
Mr. Urban.
Yes.
Mr. Lovett.
Yes.
Mr. Venus.
Yes.
Mr. Radel.
Yes. Motion passes next for Salvatore Marzico.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Loosgavage.
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo.
Yes.
Mr. McDermott.
Boss.
Mr. McGinley.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Thornton.
Yes.
Mr. Urban.
Yes.
Mr. Lovett.
Yes.
Mr. Venus.
Yes.
Mr. Radel.
Yes. Karen Plecher.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Lombardo.
Yes.
Mr. McDermott.
Boss.
Mr. McGinley.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Thornton.
Yes.
Mr. Urban.
Yes.
Mr. Lovett.
Yes.
Mr. Venus.
Yes.
Mr. Loosgavage.
Yes.
Mr. Radel.
Yes. Gary Schwartz.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. McDermott.
Boss.
Mr. McGinley.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Thornton.
Yes.
Mr. Urban.
Yes.
Mr. Lovett.
Yes.
Mr. Venus.
Yes.
Mr. Loosgavage.
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo.
Yes.
Mr. Radel.
Yes. Hey, congratulations to the new four planning commission members. Next we have the Loser County Zoning Hearing Board. We have one term ending in 2025. Motion open.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Abstentions opposed nominations are open.
Nominate Mr. Dave Walsh.
Second.
Motion closed.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Abstentions opposed nominations are closed. We have one open. We have one person. This is where Mr. Griffith is saying that we should do a roll. He's saying we should do, go around and state Williams.
We should have done that all the time.
Yeah, but we didn't. So let's just, can we just do how we've been doing it and say it's just it's one person. You can vote no to the resolution if you don't want that person. Attorney, can we do that or should we rectify it? Okay. Resolution. Resolution for Williams.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. McGinley.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Thornton.
Yes.
Mr. Urban.
Yes.
Mr. Lovett.
Yes.
Mr. Venus.
Yes.
Mr. Loosgavage.
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo.
Yes.
Mr. McDermott.
Boss.
Mr. Radel.
Yes. Next we have the Loser School Kill Workforce Investment Board. Two terms ending in 2026.
Motion.
All favor.
Aye.
Abstentions opposed nominations are open.
I'd nominate Ms. McKiddish.
Second.
Nominate Mr. Shaver.
Second.
Motion closed.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Abstentions opposed nominations are closed. We have two. It is the same, same term. So we'll do the resolutions one at a time. First for Ms. McKiddish.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Thornton.
Yes.
Mr. Urban.
Yes.
Mr. Lovett.
Yes.
Mr. Venus.
Yes.
Mr. Loosgavage.
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo.
Yes.
Mr. McDermott.
Boss.
Mr. McGinley.
Yes.
Radel. Yes. My motion passes next for William Shaver.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Thornton.
Yes.
Mr. Urban.
Yes.
Mr. Lovett.
Yes.
Mr. Venus.
Yes.
Mr. Loosgavage.
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo.
Yes.
Mr. McDermott.
Boss.
Mr. McGinley.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. Radel.
Yes.
unanimous.
Next we have the Loser Wyoming County's Area Agency Aging Advisory Board. Keep in mind you look at your eligibility list. So we have three terms all ending in 2025, but Ms. Amy Lowell Hart has already been appointed to.
Motion open nominations.
All favor.
Aye.
Abstentions opposed nominations are open.
I'd nominate Mr.
Question, do we remove Amy Lowell?
Yep.
Yeah. I'd like to nominate Mr. Yozviak.
Second.
Nominate Mr. Walsh.
Second.
Nominate Mr. Derek.
Second.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Abstentions opposed nominations are closed. So we have three. All the term, we have, yeah, all the terms are the same. They all end in 2025. So we'll go Yozviak first.
Motion. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Thornton.
Yes.
Mr. Urban.
Yes.
Mr. Lovett.
Yes.
Mr. Venus.
Yes.
Mr. Loosgavage.
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo.
Yes.
Mr. McDermott.
Boss.
Mr. McGinley.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell. Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Radel.
Yes.
Ross.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Urban.
Yes.
Mr. Lovett.
Yes.
Mr. Venus.
Yes.
Mr. Loosgavage.
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo.
Yes.
Mr. McDermott.
Boss.
Mr. McGinley.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Thornton.
Yes.
Mr. Radel.
Yes. Mr. Serry.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Lovett.
Yes.
Mr. Venus.
Yes.
Mr. Loosgavage.
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo.
Yes.
Mr. McDermott.
Boss.
Mr. McGinley.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell. Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Thornton.
Yes.
Mr. Urban.
Yes.
Mr. Radel.
Yes.
unanimous.
Next we have the Loser Wyoming County's Drug and Alcohol Executive Committee. We have one.
Motion's open nomination.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Abstentions opposed nominations are open.
Nominate Mr. Myers.
Second.
There are motion to close nominations.
Motion. Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Abstentions opposed nominations are closed.
Real quick, his name is spelled M-E-Y-B-R-S based on his resident.
Got it. Resolution for Mr. Myers.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Venus.
Yes.
Mr. Loosgavage.
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo.
Yes.
Mr. McDermott.
Boss.
Mr. McGinley.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Thornton.
Yes.
Mr. Urban.
Yes.
Mr. Lovett.
Yes.
Mr. Radel.
Yes. Next we have the Loser Wyoming County's Local Health Development Services Program of.
Motion open nominations.
Hold on. Well, motion, could you open those just for the education term?
Motion.
For education.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Abstentions opposed nominations are open for the education term ending in 2025.
Nominate Mr. Derek.
Second.
There are motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Abstentions opposed nominations are closed. The resolution for Raylene Derry.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Loosgavage.
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo.
Yes.
Mr. McDermott.
Boss.
Mr. McGinley.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.[1001.32]
Council has discussed this while the people needed the money. It's still there. Hundred twelve million dollars from Washington. It's like winning a lottery. A lot of people don't know what to do when they win a lottery. And I think that's what happened with councils. You didn't know what to do, and it wasn't your fault. It fell in your lap. But there's not enough money and too many organizations. So you're going to talk about this in the work session. Because if you don't like this list, some of you don't. It's perfectly normal for council to want to give money to an organization that they favor. It's perfectly normal. Do you think that organization is good? They're not going to get the money according to this list, or some are? It's a big problem. It fell in your lap. Washington money. A financial to do good things for. Council disagrees on where the money should go. Hopefully, you're all going to work it out through the work session. So let's go back sixteen months ago. Hundred twelve million from Washington. Wow. They gave a lot away. Council gave a lot away. Went down to ninety-six million. You're still moving on. This last list that came out to booth management, fifty-nine million going. Maybe at least thirty-seven million in the jackpot. I have been arguing or asking beg for council to set aside five million for utility payments for the seniors and the working families who are overrun with bills. Five million cash eligible only. I wouldn't qualify. Many people in Shroom won't qualify. It's income based. Council, you have to do it. You've got thirty-seven million left in the pot. Put five million away because I don't think there's going to be enough seats if the seniors don't get a piece of the pot. They deserve it. They're part of the greatest generation. Give them something from Washington. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Any other members of the public? Those of you that say you're talking about the COVID grant, you can talk now or at the end of the work session, whatever you'd rather. Do you want to come now? Ms. Calment, right?
I am Calment.
Sure.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I started regularly attending council meetings last September and have received quite an education as to the workings of county government. I have watched the ARD grant process unfold from application up to tonight. I watched Ms. Booth present a format that would promote an unbiased and merit-based selection through a two-part review, first by booth management and then by council, as well as present a scoring system that was agreed upon by this council. Council members asked many questions and requested countless clarifications of Ms. Booth, and in the end, agreed on the procedures for assessment and evaluation. At the last meeting on January twenty-fourth, three motions regarding grant policies and procedures were presented, discussed, and all were passed unanimously. One of those motions specifically addressed the minimum score for awards, and again, it was passed unanimously. At no time did any council member suggest tabling this or any of those motions until a later date to afford more time for consideration. Excuse me, last Thursday, the list of seventy-five grant recipients was presented to council members and made available to the general public through online publication. I was flabbergasted to discover this because after specifically questioning when and how that announcement would be made, I was told that both council and public would receive the list at tonight's meeting, at which time it would be voted upon for approval. I was even more shocked to read that after receiving that list of recipients, several council members were questioning both the process and some of the entities that did and did not make the list. There are council members that are stating they cannot vote for the list as it is because there are worthy organizations that deserve to be included. With all due respect, your opinion is not relevant per the process that you put in place. Quite frankly, these commentaries exemplify exactly what that process was meant to prevent: personal bias. If you do not vote to approve tonight, you will make a mockery of that process you put in place, as well as months of work to determine the seventy-five award recipients. If you choose to start this process over or put it on a shelf, I personally will be appalled and greatly disappointed by this council. You have a list of seventy-five award recipients who met all strict federal guidelines, completed a very detailed grant application, and met the score that was established by this council. I am asking each of you to stand by the process that you put into place. I am asking each of you to not let personal and public opinion blur the lines of that process. And I'm asking each of you to vote tonight to accept the recipient list as you had, as recently as three weeks ago, promised to do. It is a matter of honesty and integrity, and it is a matter of doing what is right. Thank you.
I just want to let the public know there was an issue that we feel that five applicants were not scored by any member of council. That is, in all fairness, I want to make sure that those five organizations get equal access to the money. And if there's five applications that were not scored by any of us eleven, I think that's completely unfair. That is why I would not support voting on this tonight. So I want to make equal access to everyone.
And in the meantime, you have entities that followed the process and that have people that are counting on them, such as my business, that are in need of our services, that we got approved. So I appreciate that, but...
We'll discuss it during the work session. Thoroughly during the work session. Yeah. Michelle McKiddish or Amy Bezek? You want to wait till the end of the... Okay. Any other members of the public that wish to speak?
Joe Grant, Team Plains. I'm here to speak against a five-hundred-and-seventy-eight-thousand-dollar grant to Volunteers of America for the reason that last summer, I spent five days in front of their building, flying an American flag that they refused to fly. One of the people that was living inside, after a while, came out, threatened me with gang action. It would be a travesty to reward them with taxpayer money when they are totally against the American way. And that's all I have to say.
Any other members of the public that wish to speak? Okay. If not, we have members online. Mr. Raybo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I would like to say, as far as the beginning of the ARP process, this is before booth management came on the scene. I wanted to point out, one of the seventy-five applicants, the city of Hazleton, which has applied for nine-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand, a little over nine-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand, and another request for parks and recreation for over twenty thousand. I just wanted to point out to council that council approved five-hundred-thousand dollars of allocation through the ARP money for Hazleton City Land Bank before the process was adopted. I was in attendance since the process began. The council members at the beginning of the entire process, before booth, when booth management was brought on the scene, I could have sworn that council agreed, had a consensus, that only one municipality and one organization per allocation would be permitted to ensure fairness for all interested parties. Also, before the ninety-seven-million-dollar funding was discussed, third-party EDOs and business chambers interested in ARP funding were asked about their administrative cost percentages that they would gain if they received any award from the ARP money. I would suggest that, in the discussion that council has with regards to the ARP funds in the work session, that they would stipulate for the third parties and EDOs that their administrative cost percentages would be reduced to at least no more than one percent or totally waive the administrative costs, since anything over that would be considered a windfall. And that would be a disservice to all the business owners and any entities that are in desperate need, and also the seniors and working poor. I point this out because, you know, it is unconscionable that council would consider giving, you know, third parties ARP money when there are people that are struggling. And plus, I would remind you that the county roads still need to be funded as far as the, you know, because two and a half months down is not too far away from when the weather breaks. And I would like to point that out, that that should be taken into consideration. I have two questions. Does the office restriction edict put out by Administrative Service Division Head Jennifer Pacora apply to the board members of all county authorities? I asked that question of the county manager and Mr. Skeen. And can the county manager or administrative division head, Ms. Pacora, send a copy of that edict to all county authorities to refer their review, to have their solicitors review the edict? That's all I have.
Thank you. Vivian?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
This is Vivian Pride, with the senior from Nescapet. I was wondering, with this ARP money, were you aware of the Dallas Municipal Authority facing charges right now that the state has filed against them? And you just gave them ARP money? I have the...
We didn't award that. That list is just the scores. And I'm sorry to interrupt you. I will let you have your three minutes. I'll pause your time. But we, I just want to clarify, that list is not awarded. Council still needs to discuss and vote on it. We asked for raw data showing us what is above forty-seven percent. And that's what we asked for. So as much as we don't like the list, you don't like the list, the list is the list. It's what we base the parameters on. So that's not just for you, Vivian. It's for everybody here who's saying that we already awarded. We didn't award it.
I know. I know you just didn't award anything. Yeah, I know you just didn't award anything. But my concern is, is that originally, the high goal was sixty-five points. Sixty-five points, or six... Excuse me. There's a sixty-point threshold, and the maximum points are seventy-five. When that sixty point couldn't be obtained by everybody, that only two or three, or twenty-four projects were only, that would total twelve million dollars, you just lowered that coinage, and that should not have been lowered. And when you lowered it, you should have opened the applications again for more people to apply, like, you know, that they might have been eligible. You know, some of these things I'm seeing in this letter, and I know that's not allocated. Three-hundred-thousand dollars to a photo studio? I hope she's got proof showing that she missed a venue every day for an entire year. This money is supposed to go to help people who were affected by the pandemic, not to add a parking lot on or further their business adventure. Why, you know, the rest of the people in Luzerne County sit and twiddle their thumbs and wondered where they're going to get the money to pay their next electric bill or their rent or buy their food?
Or their taxes.
Or pay their taxes. You know, so I mean, I'm sorry to say, you do need to table this, and you do need to look a little further in that. And you wasted two-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand dollars with this booth company because evidently, they don't know what to do either. I've sat and I've read the information from the ARP. There's a lot that can be done with that money, and you didn't need to do that. You know what? If you had turned it over to your boards and committees, they probably could have come up with better ideas than the booth management did. You went from five buckets to what? Eight or ten buckets? And according to your own administration, they said you weren't supposed to give to individual businesses or to homeowners in Luzerne County. I have that in black and white. That's all I have to say. I think you better think long and hard before you just start dishing out money and you didn't do something right, and the federal government's come back to bite you in the butt. Yep.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate you making the statement earlier on that this is an award list. It's not an actual list of funds granted to these applicants. That's a very important point that's been made for the people to understand. The point that we need to understand is this money, this hundred-and-eleven million or sixty million that you have allocated, is taxpayers' money. This is not eleven council members' money. This is taxpayers' money. And so now that we've narrowed it down to seventy-five who've made the score, now it's time to release their applicants and make them public so that people can look at them to see what they wanted to do with that money, so the people can come and make their comments as to whether they feel that their money should be spent on these particular projects. And maybe have the people who put in their applications make a presentation as to say why they want the money, so we can have full transparency and full clarity for the people who have to pay the bills here, which is the taxpayers, as to what this money is going for. I certainly appreciate the work that Booth did in giving us the guidelines and the scoring possibilities and all the things that we had to do in order to fall within the federal guidelines between confidentiality and all those other things. Now it's time to open this process up to the public and let the public see who's applied and why, and then possibly make arguments as to why they should get the money, why they shouldn't, and why did we miss others. So I think that's very, very important. And I thank you for the clarity that this is clearly an award list. It doesn't necessarily mean we're going to give them the money. Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Any other members of the public that are here or online that want to speak? If not, I'm about to read a few emails to all of you. The first one is a continuation, the second part, of Walter and Robin Koshan from Dallas on ARPA motion to adopt resolution awarding American Rescue Plan Act grant monies whereas county council has final approval authority for the award of ARPA funds to applicants. Leave the people to remember that you completely ignored us repeatedly. We ask you to extend a helping hand to all Luzerne County taxpayers who are overburdened with inflationary costs, including stormwater fees. You had an easy opportunity to help us, but instead you chose to frivolously award money to special interests like Amy Bezek Photography, Valentin X Studios, Dr. Joseph Fisella, Michael Baloga, United Way, et cetera, et cetera, not to mention three-hundred-thousand dollars on booth management. Taxpayers, we will remind you are the ones providing the money for ARPA funds and the county budget. We will remember your decisions and lack of support for us taxpayers at election time or whenever you run for any other public office. You obviously do not represent us or care. Next one is from Camille Heard from Wright Township. Hello, all Wright Township would appreciate if our letter could be entered into the meeting record for tonight. Letter is attached. It's also pasted into the email body. Dear Council of Wright Township, Board of Supervisors requests that prior to awarding American Rescue Plan Grant Funds to those recommended by booth associates, that Luzerne County Council consider reaching out to the applicants to see if requests for funding can be modified so that rather than awarding large grants to a few applicants, more applicants can be considered to receive funding. Wright Township feels we have submitted a very competitive application for stormwater improvements that are much needed for our community as well as commuters and will benefit the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania by eliminating stormwater issue on Route 309. We would appreciate your reconsideration of our project, and even a partial funding of our project would be of great benefit to the mountain top area. Please feel free to reach out to us. I will give you the phone number to discuss our project and need for funding. Next is public comment work session. Oh, this is Michelle McKiddish. If we, well, this is Michelle McKiddish, City of Fitzton, Mary Malone, City of Hazleton, Lindsey Boylan, City of Oxford. Do you want me to read this, or did you want to speak on it? We can't do all. Next, we have Cindy Brandon, Wright Township. Dear Madam Chair, Raybo, Vice Chair, Libardo and Councilmembers, please let the residents of Luzerne County know when a revised list of road projects will be submitted to the Redevelopment Authority for the loan of fifty-four-point-nine million dollars. This loan is backed by our resident tax revenue and will deny the entire county access to approximately seventy-five million dollars over the next twenty-five years. The majority of residents are expecting this money to be used in a five- to ten-year phase approach to address drainage issues and replace all one-hundred-and-twenty-plus miles of county roadway. We do not agree to this loan or funding for one bridge. At this time, I would ask that the remainder of my three minutes be used to hear council members answer this question. Next, after the recent, oh, this is Laura Panero. After the recent cold snap on a Sunday morning, the Huntsville Road Extension half the road is iced. Who do you call to bring this to the county's attention? Tried calling the county, no answer. The only thing to do is leave a message. The township doesn't answer, but they do not fix the county road. County is well aware of this area, no drainage for years. They have icing here for years. Turned down both bids last year for drain repair due to lack of funding. Call 911, respond. I'll get in touch with them. There needs to be someone on call twenty-four seven during the winter and a truck all ready to go. Also, a direct never using call not having to go through 911. Next. This is from Carol Rosser, Sweet Valley. Want to tell me? Thank you for reading this correspondence in its entirety tonight. I am keenly interested in your proceedings and recent decision-making as it affects all of our county residents. I've read documentation from Mark Raybo of Luzerne County Redevelopment Authority that states he has offered you, the council and the county, several good suggestions on how he can utilize various grants, like the dot raise to properly fix all of our county roads. By applying for dot raise and use it for West Nanticoke Bridge, you could free up other funds, as is the LSA loan and the rest of the roads. Apparently, our county engineer Larry Flash felt the dot raise grant application would be in competition for those funds to reconstruct the Luzerne County owned Water Street Bridge in Fitzton. Mr. Raybo also suggested the solution of art money being secured for the West Nanticoke Bridge with LSA funds loan covering the cost of the rest of our infrastructure. I have no doubt that both the Water Street Project and West Nanticoke Bridge need funding and completion, but I feel strongly that Mr. Raybo's suggestion should be heated and put into action. Mr. Raybo obviously has the most expert knowledge of these government grants and funds and is in touch with the agencies that can offer Luzerne County the most varied solutions to our road failures. I urge you to rethink his proposal seriously and give us safety and security on our roads for fifty-four-million-dollar loan you negotiated. When Governor Josh Shapiro recently, January twenty-four, twenty-twenty-three, formed his Transformation and Opportunity Office, he stated, "My administration will protect our business, our workforce, our world-class universities, our research institutions, and the public sector to spur economic development, particularly in communities that have too often been left behind. By helping businesses that are already here, encouraging newness from Pennsylvania and investing in our workforce, we can create real opportunity and build an economy that works for everyone." I believe Luzerne County is a perfect example of a community that has been left behind. We need better roads in every corner of the county to be able to take part in Governor Shapiro's vision, and you are now poised to make that a reality. Do not dig in your heels for the benefit of one or two projects. Why court just one business? Open our county and our universities to all business opportunities. It's come to my attention, there are several vital Luzerne County communities, including legislators, committees, legislative committee that have become dormant or inactive under your watch. The legislative committee would have been responsible for communicating and working with state and federal agencies to coordinate usage of things like dot raise to review implement Mr. Raybo's suggestions about trying these inactive committees, be revitalized and save money, time, and lives. This action could have saved and averted the recent tax increase or saved a recent suicide victim at our county jail. Your council is not doing a complete job. How could you think you are? Committees must function to get accurate information. All council members need to work on viable solutions. Suggestions brought to them, job postings that are vacant need to be filled. Wisconsin, coworkers, we need to have Luzerne County step to a new productive era with our council and department heads holding us back. Next. Final map, Nanticoke. Attention, county councilwoman, Chair, Vice Chair Libardo, and all of the council members, not to exclude booth management consulting. The second verse from the preamble of the Homable Charter, the declaration asserts that those who serve a role in our county government undertake a contract of public trust, integrity, professionalism, and respect for the wealth, fairness, equality of all residents. During this December sixth work session, Councilwoman McDermott asked if there's a third option to get art funds distributed. Councilman Urban asks, "Will it tie back to COVID?" In lieu of what art money, in lieu of what art money be used? Eligible uses of these funds include COVID-19 expenditures and negative economic impacts of COVID-19, including aid to households who invested investments in water and sewer infrastructures. Councilman Thornton suggests that we should not drag our feet on it. The time spent on discussing distribution of funds is twenty minutes. Not a penny has been distributed. We're nearing the end of two-thirds of winter season. I, Ronald D. Knapp, presented to council a means to get much-needed resources to homeowners and property owners. Like this argument is a sound request. The circumstances are dire, and households, elderly couples may have lost a loved one due to the virus cutting income in half. To add insult to injury and death in some households, you choose to mock the afflicted by creating a scene of sincere empathy, but in fact, you're rubbing salt into open wounds by choosing not to act. You will not be acting in a fiduciary manner as you swore an oath to do. Two reasons why this will not come to fruition. One, Ronald Knapp is presenting the argument. Two, individuals who during the voting process required to pass the motion will have to abstain from voting on altering the ordinance because of his or her ties to WBSA. January twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two, Luzerne County Council Work Session, additional document, WBSA agreement. Everyone on Council swore an oath on the Bible when taking office. Exodus twenty-three-two, one of God's many commandments to Moses, "Shall not follow a proud to do evil, nor shall you testify to dispute to turn aside after many to pervert justice." In Wyoming Valley, sanitary authority is granted the art money because of lost revenue. The people who pay the stormwater fee should be reimbursed or have their payments satisfied by art funds going forward. The length of lockdown is massive. The term is incontrovertible. Malice may attack it, ignorance may drive it, but in the end, there it is. Winston Churchill slash Ronald Knapp. Okay. Any other members of the public that wishes to speak? Hearing that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All favor. Ascension opposed. Okay, the voting session is adjourned. It is seven-twenty-two. We will start at seven-thirty. Let's square this up. I think we need to... So we'll talk about ARPA first. We'll leave them?
I don't think Michelle wants them.
We don't have anything to add, do we?
I have a couple things, but I didn't invite anybody.
Totally clear. I mean, I just, you didn't need to stay on that because I got to get voted on.
That's fine. The issue of course, fine. Okay.
That's fine.
We missed that for a little bit.
I would be if I was about three-hundred-thousand dollars to expand. Yeah.
But it was also not a favor of whatever. Because like, this is a city of business.
Turn your mics on. Were we for sharing? There is a mic on the, did you click that one too, Mr. McInley?
That was the one I put up there.
Okay, but it was off. I didn't know if we turned it back on.
We put it back on, but it's down here now.
Okay.
Gregory used to do that when he's on the other side. We have to give you credit too.
Can you get booth up on the screen? Robin Booth. We're doing Arba first. Okay, great. Thank you so much. All right, it's seven thirty six. We'll call the work session to order. We already did a pleasure. We just had a moment of silence. Go to roll call, please.
Mr. Vianis.
Mr. LaScavie. Mr. Lombardam. Mr. McDermott. Mr. Griffin.
What's my name? You changed my name? I'm present.
I think he did, yeah. Mr. Mitchell, I'm so sorry. Mr. Perry. Mr. Thornton.
Here.
Mr. Urban.
Here.
Mr. Willovin.
Here.
Ms. Radell. Here. All right, well, we're all here.
I want to approve the agenda with the addition.
Really quick, yep, the addition, we're going to put. Number ten from the voting to number one. And then we're going to remove number two discussion regarding third party Arba payments. Is that okay?
Absolutely.
All right, he has a motion. All favor. Ascensions opposed. Agenda is adopted to number one. Discussion, so it's no longer a motion, but regarding the Arba awarded list, I can get you the exact wording in one moment. Adopt resolution awarding American Rescue Plan Act grant monies. So we have our consultant on booth is on this PowerPoint that is up right now. We'll get to Ms. Lawrence and we can go ahead and post that. I don't know, Ms. Booth, is it, is it you that's on?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, wait, actually, hold on one second. Can we get the volume up a little bit? Oh, he's on it. Okay, all right, can we see if we can hear you now?
Yes, good, good evening.
Perfect.
Okay.
Great, thank you. Did you want to start or do you?
Oh, yeah, I didn't know.
Yeah, however you want to.
First of all, thank you. I know that this is a very sensitive. One very, very high, highly sensitive topic as it relates to the funds and. The recommendations in the pending award, I think it's been clear that this is. The council has not approved these awards. First, I wanted to kind of give a snapshot of where the funding is based on potential award. I know there's been a lot of numbers thrown around, so this is what we have as of this point. There's approved council projects of twenty one million. And these are projects that have already been approved by resolution. Within the NOFO applications, the recommended list comes up to approximately fifty, almost sixty thousand seventeen. Of sixty million, seventeen thousand dollars short of sixty million. Internal project applications, which are also on the table and recommendations for award. Comes in at seventeen million, leaving potentially thirteen million for funding. Now that number changes. We try to, this is just kind of a snapshot as of February fourteenth, twenty twenty three. But this is, as I said, the snapshot right at this minute. I want to go back and just remind everybody of the rules of engagement. One of the, one of the constituents that made a presentation, she kind of reminded us of this process too. And we did that because we anticipated that on the back end, we may, there may have been. We may have forgotten why it was done the way it's done. Out of everything on this slide, I need you to pay attention to section two hundred point two oh five of the federal. Of the uniform guidance that deals with merit based proposals. One of the things you have to remember is every application. Can be requested based on a Freedom of Information Request Act. Unlike what may be your, in your county. Your policies and procedures or legally how you can disclose information. When you get to the federal level, there are different guidelines and protections specifically under section two hundred point two one two. So to that end, the county has to comply with the federal requirements for this money. So it was a hundred and fifty one applications, a hundred and forty one external and ten internal. I mean. The council members during a holiday season from November fourteenth to twenty twenty two to twelve thirty one, twenty twenty two. Were very responsive and participatory in the process. And most all of the evaluation pools, there was close, there was at least nine of the eleven councilmen members that participated. And that was Argus considering the dates are between Thanksgiving and Christmas. The award and non-award is to be determined. This list right now was just based on raw data. I will say it, it'll say, say this throughout, we just reported raw data. We make no analysis of recommendations. We didn't look back to see who didn't, who didn't. We probably, we stayed totally objective in the process. And to ensure that the council did, we stuck to these rules of engagement. Even when questioned about potentially. Is there another way? We stuck to this process. So in the process ensures integrity, objectivity and fairness. So then the way that it was evaluated by your council members, the way we kept confidentiality, we kept conflict of interest. And we kept objectivity throughout the process. Each council member, they signed the rules of engagement, they signed the conflict of interest. And those council members conflicted out, they actually identified those that had conflict and they never saw the applications. If there were any conflicts, they never saw those applications. Confidentiality, they signed off that they would not share this information. And, and you know, we have their certifications and to the best amount, our knowledge that was kept intact. They signed off on a code of conduct. We did not allow council members access to the applications until all of these documents were signed. And I think each of them can attest to that. We, we, we held our ground on that and said unless we have these documents. Based on the, the assigned, the resolution that was approved, we're going to follow the resolution. So we did a training with the council members to go over merit based evaluation, evaluation, the confidentiality, the conflict of interest. Some of you in the audience participated in that training. And then we also made the materials available to the council. So now we did everything hard copy in the council, we had some technology issues initially because of the firewalls. Everybody worked through them. As I said, I know I had some of our team that was on the phone with council members working out how to access and read. So we made, we made sure we were available and to the extent that the council members needed any assistance. We provided that. We did our part, the eligibility and a risk assessment. And that entire package, the entire application, the entire, all, any documents that you submitted. Our determinations were made available to the council members for them to do their evaluation, including their scorecard. In each of the packages, there was a scorecard that we asked, that became the evaluation. We literally took the numbers from the scorecard and put them into a raw database we contained and then did the average scores. The average scores were based on council, the number of council members that completed the evaluation. So if, now I'm still here, so if only six councilmen completed it, we took their scores. We didn't give, if there was, there was no negative impact from not being evaluated for those applications. So if nobody evaluated you though, then, then the score became zero. And there's a couple of factors we need to talk about. I know the council wants to talk about that. We have five pools. Within the pool, these were the number of applications. If you look at these deadlines and we tried to stick to them, we had an original schedule. And then the council member, then we had some extensions. Pool three probably has a long extension, people needed additional time. Keep in mind, this was during the holiday season and council, council members had to review. Thirty five in one pool of applications within that time period. So as I said, they put a lot of time and effort in this process. And to that end, it's ninety seven percent of the applications went through a full review. The application closed immediately following the due date. Council members will tell you if they tried to go back in there, they couldn't get there. So unless it was agreed that there was an extension of time, we stuck one hundred percent to the schedule. If there was an extension, we sent a reminder, hey, this is going to close to, to keep the council members involved, understanding they're doing this. You know, in the evenings or when they could get to reviewing these pools with thirty five applications in it. And so once they, they have not seen, they have not had access to the applications. Since they've done the evaluation, so no, no one could go back and look again. They couldn't. They couldn't go back and see what they scored at another time. So we, we limited their ability to even go back into their applications. So they still haven't gone back. So once they scored, that was it. They don't, they didn't see anybody else's and they didn't, they weren't able to go back. So then at that point, we tallied the scores, we, the list that you're looking at are the averages. Yes, there was a moving curve based on. Really, if the, the council could change the language to say that those with the highest scores within up to the sixty million, that's pretty much. What, what happened to that end, they still wanted, they did not want to say, oh, only four projects fell within that, that's ten million. So forget, we're only going to award ten million. No, they wanted, they said to the public, we're investing sixty million. And they wanted to stick to that. That required some curves as it relates to the grading. So I just wanted to revisit the process. I know there's questions and I'm, to the extent that Brian. Would like me to answer those questions or you all, I will, I will do everything we can to answer them, but I can guarantee you we stuck to the, these rules of engagement that were approved by council.
Ms. Booth.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, you go.
Are you sure? Okay, Ms. Booth, what, I know myself and a couple other council members have some pretty significant issues with the fact that there are five applicants that were not included in pool three. And that is, you know, because their scores came out to zero on our sheet here, you know, it says, obviously, they weren't awarded funds, so, okay, that's neither here nor there, but their scores came out to zero. That's impossible if, if all of us were to take a look at that application, they would have been scored at least five according to one of the questions on your application. So I know that you had told us that there were, you know, several council members who had to conflict themselves out. I was one of them who had to conflict myself out from one of the applications that are in question. And there were three council members who did not complete any reviews in pool three. But that would still mean that there were eight council members who had the opportunity to complete at least four out of the five, or potentially five of those projects. So I'm just, you know, one of the big questions we have is, we're just wondering why these five organizations didn't have an opportunity to, to receive a review.
So that we can show you the screenshots, those applications were in the pool. Every, there was never a question about the applica, I, I don't know if you all can see me, I'm, I have your screen up, I see you pricing. Those applications were in the pool. What we looked at, one, there were several conflicts in that pool, in pool three. That pool, we had to extend two times. We had council members say they had sick families, it was a lot of issues. To be honest, those three were the bottom three applications. So we didn't, how do I say this? We didn't analyze to say, oh, nobody scored these applications, because to a certain extent, we didn't know why, and we're not questioning why. Because for us, it did appear to be an anomaly, but it was anomaly that could have been, we had so many conflicts, and I'll just keep saying that. It's also important to note that the, of the five applications you're talking about, three of them are already being awarded. They're in the award pool right now. So I know there's an issue with duplicate, and that you all, there, nobody's getting a multiple award, so three of the five are actually getting an award, recommended award, if you all approved that list. And, and so the other two, all we could come up with after you all raised this issue, is they were at the, they were the last three, every other application in pool three got evaluated.
Ms. Booth, if I may, why is the score zero if one, for those particular applications, if one thing automatically scored five? How did we come up with the score of zero? I mean, at the bare minimum, it should have been five, if they were all on there.
Because you had to do the evaluation to get the score. We didn't, we didn't go automatically give five. You all automatically gave five. We don't touch your scorecards. Your scorecard, there was an audit, the five that you're talking about.
So that means, no, so that would mean, no, which I have a separate question, but if I'm just understanding correctly, we had to physically at least do the evaluation for them to get the five, that's fine, but are you saying no council members laid eyes on any of those five?
Those three, those five, I'll say five, those five projects.
Wait, could it have been a glitch? Like, is there a reason maybe the council members that did? So maybe if six council members saw pool three, right, one was conflicted out, so at least five council members saw, saw those applications, and all five of them just overlooked them? If, if that's what happened, then that's what happened, but could it have been, maybe they weren't there?
Can you still see my screen?
Yes.
So we went back into the pool, and we looked at the applica, this is actually the screenshot of what you saw in pool three. And so all we could come up, because we, we saw them there, and if you look at the dates, we can't change those dates, they are system-driven dates. You notice it says November twenty-eighth, November twenty-eighth, they're not, we can't change those dates. Those dates talk about when that file was there. They were there. I, I don't know. We, if all I can see, oh, I'm showing too much information, all I can see is that they were at the bottom of the list. If you look at that, we don't, we can't put that date there. That date is the date that were in that pool. I, I can't answer. As I said, the council can, I mean, it's your decisions either way, but in all fairness, I will concur that those five applications, for whatever reason, did not appear to give, and then that one pool, out of a hundred and fifty-one applications, those three, five, and I keep saying three, those five were the five that, that weren't evaluated. Yes.
Those applications, when we went through them, five was already pre-populated into the list, so if we didn't even look at them, they should have received five. Am I right or am I wrong?
Right, but we didn't sign them and submit them.
Okay, I understand.
So we would have given.
You also said three of them got awarded. How did it get awarded?
I think.
No, no, they had multiple.
See the awards.
Yeah, they had multiple applications. They had multiple.
Higher score if we did score them.
That's what I was ge- getting at.
So it's saying, one organization, say that the two applications had a forty-five, and if we did score, it received a fifty-seven, it would have went to that one.
Yeah, we're clearly not saying that we were gonna give any of these entities multiple awards, so obviously, we've already pre-agreed that we were gonna only give one award to each entity, you know, but again, still, it just, it just doesn't seem, you know, fair that these five projects didn't have the opportunity to be graded as well.
I, I, I can't, I, I mean.
May I ask a question? This is Liam McDermott. I kept a, a master list of every application, every score that I put on there. And I have nothing by these applications, but also each pool, I kept a list, I did, I was able to print them. All I had on that pool three was third applications. I wrote down everything, each pool, and then one master list of up and above, you know, beyond that. I don't have these on there. And, and one that just stands out to me is the dress for success. And even if that was, you know, some, I couldn't maybe remember the other ones, I would definitely remember that one. And I'm not just singling out one application, I'm just saying that that one definitely would stand out in my mind. I don't, it, it doesn't make sense to me how many of us council members could have missed it.
And, and all I can say is that, I'm showing you what we had in our system, and it, it could have been, very well been a glitch, just that we didn't have that issue with any pool, any other pool, we didn't have it at any other time. And the council can, I mean, from those five evaluated, they're still able to be evaluated. I mean, I'm not, that's a council decision. All, we looked in our system, there, they were, we always checked to make sure every application was there. I, I just, I really, and that's why we pulled our screen, that's why we went in and pulled our screenshots to even look and say, okay, every, and, and they were there, the only thing we could see is that they were at the bottom. All of them, the five of them were at the bottom together. They weren't, they were in order together at the bottom of the list, like the last applications. We said maybe they just didn't get to them.
No, I believe it was a glitch, but
Okay.
this council, we have to try to figure out how we want to handle that.
And we had some security, and we, but we worked through most of them, but that's, that's the only pool in the, and the only, and you, the five points, we didn't give five points unless you did the evaluations. So for, when, for instance, if the council members didn't do evaluation, that person didn't get five points, it would have skewed that score even more negatively. Because that would, they would have only gotten five points, but it brought their average down. So you had to complete the evaluation to get five points.
Ms. Booth. So I started doing the two polls, and then on the third one, I was kicked out.
Okay.
The reason that was you had claimed I didn't have my policy statement, privacy policy, which I indeed did. So then I reached out, because the only email I had was the lady that was handling our account, I don't remember her name.
Mm-hmm.
And I was emailing her, and I wasn't getting a response, and then finally, she said I'm no longer there. So now I reach out to you people, and I had sent you at least three times, and you kept claiming you didn't get it. So out of pure frustration, I think you'll remember my email, I said, you don't want to forget it, I'm not scoring anything, because I should never have to go through this to score these applications. And then the next problem I have is on the last poll, I should have had four hours left, and I go to finish it, and I'm kicked out again, and I can't get back in, it's at time expired, or whatever it said. I, I, for the life of me, nothing should be that hard. I, I'm just saying, like, and I can't believe I was the only one that had that happen.
Actually, he sent it for him to Mr., to Brian, we didn't get it. Brian wound up sending it to us, but we didn't.
That's the only way to get it to you, which was bizarre, because all my other emails, you weren't receiving, so I don't understand why you weren't getting that.
And we have a list.
And all the trouble, and all due respect, when that individual left, who was handling this, on that third poll, when she left, that's when all the trouble started for me.
She actually left the fir, the first poll, just to clarify, she never made it to the third.
Because I'm telling you, it, it wasn't working smooth for me at all.
Ms. Booth.
Yes.
Brian Thornton here. First, I, I want to thank you for helping us do that process. I, I have a lot of issues with it though, however, I'm not gonna get into all of them now, unless I wanted to. But the one major issue was on the fifth and final poll, and I think I was pretty much a hundred percent, almost, on evaluating the first four pools of applicants. The fifth and final one, I had a, the last day, I had a long time to evaluate what was remaining of the fifth pool, and I couldn't evaluate what I had left. It was, it was quite a bit. I don't know if it was a dozen or fifteen, fifteen of them, but the system would not let me log in. And I just, I was up against eleven hour, and I just couldn't get in. So I don't know if it's possible that, for those of us who didn't even see some of the applications, would it be possible anytime in the near future for us to see those, if council would allow it? I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, I'll interject, so I actually asked that today, if we could at least have read-only access to log back in, and I believe, Ms. Booth, did you talk to Mr. Swet about that? I sent an email earlier today.
Yes.
Just to see if we could go in and read them. This way, when we're getting questions, you know, like you mentioned, we were doing this at the beginning of November, so, you know, not every application is fresh in our minds.
Well, read-only would be great for all of them, but for the ones that some council members never saw or never evaluated at all, could we actually evaluate those?
I think we have to.
Wait, can I, can I say something? So, Ms. Booth, I wanted to, we kind of got a little bit off topic, but so I had two things that wa, I wanted to address based on what I've heard in response from all council members. And I'm not speaking for all of you, you all can, you know, talk individually as well. But the first thing was definitely the technical issues. I've gotten feedback from almost every single council member, if not every single council member, that at one point, they did have a technical difficulty, and most of them did communicate that with you. But we've, we all experienced it at least once, whether it was, we didn't get the original email till the following week, so we didn't have the full time, and then we needed an extension. We couldn't see applications, we couldn't submit them, we were locked out, different things like that that were happening. And then the other thing that I've heard from all council members is that this list, as I'm sure I, you've read in the paper, and everybody here has read in the paper, that councils, quote-unquote, not happy with the list. So, and I mentioned this earlier in the meeting, the list is the list. We, we did, we signed the rules of engagement, we said we're gonna follow merit-based process. We didn't allow people to come talk, we conflicted out of things that we might have conflicts with. I feel like we followed the rules. We got this far, and now we're saying, whoa, 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 like now we don't like it, because here's the thing, every single one of us here, whether you say you do or you don't, we all have a personal bias to an organization, right? So whether or not we act on that, but everybody has a, maybe a charity or a nonprofit that's near and dear to your heart, or a business that you frequent, that you would like to see them, but we, we made sure that that didn't happen by following this process, right? So now the list is the list, but now what I'm getting from a majority of my colleagues is the amounts, right? So, you know, Robin, you and your team went in, you guys gave us those workbooks, which kudos to you, because that was a really heavy lift on your end. You gave us the workbooks, you gave us the grades. But now, how did you come across, or, or how did you evaluate award amounts, right? Because every single application that's on that list, above forty-seven percent, you know, whatever they were asked for is what they were awarded. And, and that's fine, we just want to know, we don't want to, we obviously don't want to break any rules here, especially with federal funding. So council members have been bouncing ideas off, like, we're not changing, we, I don't think we can change the list. I hope a majority does not want to change the list, because the data is the data. But in regards to amounts, what are we allowed to do? What can we alter? What's the process to just take a look at these amounts and make sure they're all justified? And that every single project, you know, is worthy of the full amount, or that they need the full amount? How, how do we go about that, or how did you go about that?
Well, one, we didn't evaluate their budgets. People presented projects and the budgets that they needed to achieve the goals of the project. So when you start slashing budgets, what happens generally is that then their project objectives, their measurements, they can't achieve, because they, the budget was designed to meet a certain outcome and performance metrics. You also got to remember with this ARPA funds, it is very performance-based. So the government is looking for you to be able to demonstrate to the general public that you put, when you put this money out, it helped small businesses. It helped all populations, not just all those eligible activity categories that are around. So we don't evaluate the budget, we look for allowability. For instance, I don't know how much you need for a capital project to make it work, or I, we don't know how much you need for your program for it to meet the outcomes, that, that, we didn't evaluate. Nobody evaluates the budgets generally in this process. What you can decide, just be cautious that when you start splitting budgets, and that, that, that also changes for a lot of those that you've awarded funds, how they can use the, and, and potentially the performance outcomes and measures that they can achieve. You also start expanding your pool of, for monitoring. You, you got to remember, right now, you're at seventy-five, seventy-six. If you decide, let's say, to give everybody monies, you then require to monitor a hundred and forty-one subrecipients. So unlike with your state funds, or maybe your counties, you don't have to, you're required to monitor, which is heavy load, and I, you know, I heard someone mention our contractor, whether it's with whomever, you then have to pay to monitor that large pool of suburbs, and hoping that you get outcomes that demonstrate the county used the monies, you know, to really, as an investment to the county and in their community. So it's, the budgets were based on what they needed to get the projects done. We looked at the allowability to say, oh, you can use ARPA monies for this budget, for this project.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted your take on it, because it's just been like the kind of discussion that's going on here, so I wanted your expert opinion first, but Mr. Urban has a question.
Yeah, Steve Urban here. I had a question that I had submitted through email regarding one of the applicants. When I was deep diving into the weeds of, of that application, I noticed that, you know, I, I understand that we, we were trying to keep the funding within Loseran County, and then one of the applicants had people on their executive board, that one of them lived out of state, and the other one lived out of this county in the Philadelphia area. So you know, the parameters, I think we, we wanted to keep it within, within the Loseran County. So what, you know, I, I never got a response back about their eligibility from your group. I'm still waiting on that answer.
That wouldn't be an eligibility determination for us. That would be for you all, part of your evaluation factors, is you wanted them local. Our eligibility was determining the eligibility under the ARPA funding, not under ARPA eligible categories, not your, your county's requirements for wanting to keep whatever your evaluation factors were.
And, and I guess the other thing too, is, is that I caught a different application where one person actually submitted the application, and, and appeared that the, the one signature at the end of the application was forged. So, you know.
I mean, we wouldn't have.
You, you wouldn't have caught it, but I, I caught it, you know, like, when it was, the way it was signed, and I reached out to the person whose signature it should have been, and that person didn't sign it, they didn't recall signing anything like that. So, you know, those are things that I think we have to take a, a deeper look at, you know, as a council. And the read-only access obviously would be something that, you know, I think we would recommend, so we could see those applicants and kind of take a second pass at them, just in case, you know, not be able to change any of the data, but be able to look at it from, from a deeper perspective, and make sure that everything is sort of like, all the eyes are done, and the T's are crossed, and nobody's, you know, potentially committing any type of fraud, or, you know, we want to keep it in the scope of Loseran County versus outside of this county as well.
Sure. Mr. Perry, I'm sorry, you could go next. You've been trying to get awarded.
Yes. Ms. Booth, I just wanted to follow up on, on the five questionable projects. I took notes on every single one, dive, I like, all of them.
Yeah.
They're all here. I looked at pool number three, and need, not, not one of those five are listed here.
Okay.
I either didn't see them, or they were on another page, but I didn't miss any other one. So that, that was my concern, they weren't, they weren't, I didn't see them at all.
Okay.
You know, just throw my two cents.
And that's, that's fair. As I said, it sounds like that's, y'all, evidently, it sounds like that's, you all didn't see them. I think Ms. Um, I think Ms., um, one of the phone said the same.
Ms. Booth, I have another question. I apologize. Um, so one of the other issues that I think council has had during this process was obviously our scores for each of these evaluations relied very heavily on whether a project was listed as eligible or ineligible as determined by your organization. And I understand that there's, you know, parameters that you went by to make that determination. You looked at their application and their, uh, financial documents and their reasonings for their projects. Um, one of the questions that I posed to you via email was, you know, some organizations presented projects that were very similar, if not identical to a project that another organization would have submitted. And yet, you know, one organization would be considered eligible, another one would not be considered eligible. Um, so that's part one of my question is, you know, what was, did you take an opportunity to try to remedy that with any of those applicants? And the second part is, um, I also took notes on every project, um, you know, and they got a little bit more comprehensive as I went through the list, um, through each group. Um, and, you know, I'm just trying to, I, as I was looking through my list in each pool, um, and then looking at the, um, documentation that you gave us last week with the, you know, the, uh, ones that were funded, the ones that were not funded, um, I noticed some discrepancy in my notes. And then what is listed on, um, your documentation? This is, I'm looking at the sheet that shows the actual scores, the average scores. So some of these projects are listed as, um, well, they're not listed as ineligible on this, on your sheet. Um, but I have it written down that a couple of the projects are listed as ineligible. Um, I don't want to specifically call out the projects here, you know, in public. Um, but I mean, I'm, you know, I happen to discuss it with you privately, which ones, but I'm just wondering why there might be that discrepancy.
Okay. So let's talk about two projects that are the same. It depends on what they wrote. Um, we can't make a, so if in your project description, you can tie in and impact into COVID and you're able to address issues relative to performance and you don't use language like this is revenue replacement. Um, because, and I know which applicants you're talking about and they, and the one applicant tied it directly into COVID. They tied how that was going, how the resources were going to be used to address COVID impact. The other application talked nothing about COVID. It just talked about needing a certain resource. So we can't, our, it's not objective to go back to an applicant and say, oh, you didn't write this the right way. You know, we, it, it's about what, it's almost like if you submit your resume or your job application, you, you, you submit the application and, you know, in response to whatever the requirements are and whatever application or resume is the strongest, that's how it's going to be reviewed. So we didn't, we, we would not have, this is not objective to go back and say, oh, you didn't write your project scope the right way. That, that wouldn't be, that's why we, it was designed to ask questions and consistently say impact to COVID, impact to COVID, which was said, you know, which was demonstrated throughout the process. The second with the eligible and ineligible, um, depending on what we told you all. I, I know that what we tell you and then what you do when you get the documents are two different things. But in the training, we specifically said that, that. I, I thought somebody was asking the questions. With the eligible and ineligible, we specifically said you should still evaluate. Because you all, you all could have put it in revenue replacement. You all could have made other decisions on it. So your evaluation factors didn't, weren't, you weren't, that wasn't a part of your evaluation factors. It was just the content of the application. So if when you did your evaluation, that shouldn't have been that.
I certainly scored many projects differently based on the fact that they were eligible or ineligible. I mean, if, if, if that was the case and I scored every project that was listed as ineligible differently, there would be way over ten million dollars of revenue replacement that we would be looking at right now, at least, at, at least on my list. So maybe that, I, maybe that wasn't conveyed to us the way that we would have understood it properly, but I, I'm not sure. I'd have to go back and look.
Mr. McGinley?
Yeah, uh, a couple of items actually. Number one, funding is an issue separate from whether the application was approved for funding or not. And I think if you've talked to people who do this, it's grant writing and accepting grants, it's, uh, most people do not indicate that they're going to get full funding. Usually it's something less than full funding, some way to help people, but it's usually not full funding. We did ask in the application a minimum of a five percent grant, batch, excuse me. But, you know, the more matched, the better the situation is as far as us being available to fund. The second part, and this is my old school teacher stuff I'm talking. When you do a curve, and that's what, uh, Ms. Booth had talked about, and she's right, there's a curve. When you do a curve, you have to look at the whole body first before you make the decision how you're going to curve it. So if we had a hundred students in class and they all took the test and now you guys score them and you're going to put it on a curve, you look at the whole body and say, these top five should get a ninety five. The next group should get a ninety or whatever, and you work your way down through the whole group. Uh, because of the way we received the information and then, hey, you did what you said you were going to do. We were not able to see the whole group to look at that curve. And, you know, that has an effect. And the other part is, you know, somebody said, well, that didn't have a negative effect. If only six people scored a, a project and five did not. If two people of that sixth scored a real high, the average is going to be way up. And then maybe if two other people scored from the five, the average would have been way down. So there is, there is effect when you change the number of people who are scoring a project. Now, I understand, you know, people had some conflicts and whatever it might be, and that's fine. You gotta deal with that and that's what we signed off on. But there is an effect based on the number of people who scored. So. That's my two cents. And, uh, I mean, I'm not going to question what you did, Ms. Booth. And I think, looking around this table, I know that most people really, really did a great job. Confidentiality, no collusion, all those things. I mean, I didn't hear any discussion from anyone until after all the scoring was done, until after everything had been turned into your companies. So I think the council at large did a great job with that.
Mr. Henry?
Yeah, I, I gotta be honest. Um, I struggled with scoring a good number of the applications based on the questions on the evaluation form. Uh, there were seven or eight questions, the same questions for each application. And when I, I look back, you know, here's the, uh, American Rescue Plan Act, twenty twenty one. I turn to this page, it says uses of funding. There are basically seven major categories for uses of funding. Supporting the public health response, addressing the negative economic impacts caused by the epidemic, serving the hardest hit communities and families is number three. Replacing lost public sector revenues, number four. Uh, number five, providing premium pay for essential workers. Six, investing in water and sewer infrastructure. And seven, investing in broadband infrastructure. So. There are seven categories, but I felt the questions on the evaluation form were very narrow and restricted councils' ability, ability to adequately score many valid applications sufficiently high enough to award them a grant. For instance, uh, I have a screenshot of two of the questions of the seven, I think. And, and some of the seven were only five points max that a, that applicant could receive. But these two questions were fifteen point max. And if, if, uh, someone who say, and I, and I strive real hard to try to award every first responder organization a high score. Everyone who wants a fire truck, a firehouse, uh, an ambulance, I'm, I'm all for, support that for the community. And that's one of the eligible uses here. But yet, when I strictly try to adhere to these questions, especially these two, and someone, uh, you know, is requesting, you know, eight hundred thousand or a million dollars for new fire truck, I have to answer this question, these two questions. Does the project seek to service support any impacted or disproportionately impacted populations or classes? And the second question, does the project address an economic or social inequity or advance inclusion? And that was in a, in a, in a margin said racial equity or something like that. And I'm trying to see about, you know, I'm trying to reconcile that in my head, buying a new fire truck in and of itself. Does that necessarily support disproportionately impacted populations? Well, I don't know. I mean, I guess fire trucks in inner cities, you, you could argue that. Fire trucks maybe out in the rural areas, the more wealthy areas. I don't know. Does the project, uh, address an economic or social inequity or advance inclusion? Well, I know what inclusion means. I think most people here do. But when, when you're trying to award money for a new sewer project, I don't know if that addresses social inequities or inclusion of different people. And, and yet it's an eligible, uh, use of the money right here, water and sewer infrastructure, drinking water and wastewater projects. And there was many applications requesting that. And I, I, I honestly did my best to give all my scores, but I think the questions were so narrow that it made it very difficult to give those entities a high score, a real high score, which in my opinion, they should have had. I would have had maybe fifteen questions, one of them being, does this project address the eligible use of improving or constructing water or sewer infrastructure? Period. And another question, uh, does this project, uh, include uh, advancing, uh, either premium pay for essential workers or providing necessary, uh, emergency equipment for police or fire? I mean, that in my opinion would have been a great question to have on there rather than just a limited three questions or so that really carried a very high point value. And if you can't give fifteen points on two of those questions, there's thirty points. You start at seventy five, now you're down to forty five. I mean, I just, I, I, I struggled with, I struggled something late. I was doing these two in the morning and, you know, I'm trying to do my best with it. I just wish the questions were broader, more questions and included, uh, didn't kind of direct council towards a certain, uh, use such as the first couple of uses, which are very good, important uses. But I think the questions kind of pigeonhole me into a corner where I, I, I had a difficult time awarding to a lot of these other uses. That's, that's all I have to say on that. Thank you.
Um, any other questions from council members? Um, all right. If there's no other questions, I want to ask council, how do you feel we should move forward? Do we need to have another work session specifically dedicated to this? Uh, what, what do you guys think? What, what do you want to do?
I think in two weeks, we should have another work session in public where we can discuss it all.
Oh, yeah. No, 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 not exactly. It's a work session.
Mr. Ray, I think number one, and I think if you polled everybody, probably would say yes. The people whose names are in the paper and media, they're going to get funding. What the level of funding will be, decision of the council will make it. So those seventy five names or whatever it is, I believe they'll get funded. And I think most people would agree. Our issue is what's the funding level and how it's distributed? That's our issue. We asked that question about the five percent match. Most people replied, yes. And, you know, somebody said, yeah, I can do more of a match rate. My other situation is, and this is something, uh, I'm going to try to address it without putting a specific name behind it. We had one large award, not award, one large indicated. And so I contacted the, the parties involved and talked to them a little bit. And we talked to them, we said, you know, that's a very large award and dramatically affects everything else because they're, they're taking a big percentage. And I said to them, it's just something you can do. And what it basically came down to, and, uh, trying to be polite about it, there was a study done that's like eighteen years old. Uh, that would, that was the basis of the project. And the figure that was, uh, part of that study was what was submitted as part of the application. Well, I think any of us realize eighteen years ago versus where we are today, twenty twenty three, that's not going to line up. There's going to be issues. And talking to the individuals, I think what they're really looking for is some seed money. So they can use that to get other organizations or government entities, whatever it may be, to support that project. But they're going to need a lot more money than what was indicated in that particular list. So that, they're going to have some work to do, but they're looking for some seed money, not necessarily the whole, uh, number that was there.
Sure.
And I think might find that among several of the applicants. You know, not that I talked to all of them, but I think you would find that under several of the applicants. And that would allow other people, you know, Ms. Booth referred to the fact you have to monitor. Yes, I agree. We have to monitor. But that's not going to stand in my way to award some funding to somebody. Whatever we have to do, we have to do. And if there's, uh, funding available and we can help somebody, that's what we should be doing. And if it requires a couple more dollars in, in monitoring money, okay, I'll agree to that. So I don't, I don't think that should be something that's an obstacle. I think that's something that the council has to deal with and decide how they want to move forward. I mean, I, I've been one of the people saying, let's, let's get the money out to the public, start some things. But I think we had to have this session tonight because as you heard, there's a lot of different issues that we have to get cleaned up. So we know what we're standing with. If, you know, four or five of the applicants were not scored, is that fair?
No.
No, I don't. And I don't think anybody believes this, sir.
Mr. Swet, did you want to interject?
Yeah, I, I, again, I've said that a hundred times, it's your process. But Ms. Booth, if, if that was done, and again, it's council's decision, would they need to resubmitting all applicants or awarded applicants, potentially whatever? Need to resubmit budgets again to the point of the public and the question? I think count, I get council has a purview, but just because a project is, could take less money, it might not, the same project, it might not meet the criteria. So if I was going to build a new building for social distancing and now I can't build a new building, uh, and I'm going to repaint my old building, it's ineligible now. So I think, you know, it's going to put more work and I'm not saying that, uh, can't have a work session, can't have a discussion, but I think that requires a new budget for anybody that's impacted. So if you're going to give somebody any percentage of us a hundred percent, they're going to have to, and they have to go back to either their grant writer or their finance person. Uh, some might have broken themselves, some might not.
Well, Mr. Swet, you're the manager of the county, but you're not the county council.
I am not.
And I, you know, when nobody was guaranteed they would get a hundred percent, nowhere will you find that written. I take offense to that, that you would indicate a hundred percent. That's not right. That's not right.
I, I think what was said wasn't, I get it, was a list, it wasn't true. Uh, a hundred percent was said three weeks ago for seventy five people, and that was determined with the new score. So council can do what council needs to do and still meet the parameters of the federal funds, which I think everyone's trying to do.
Right.
But I just trying to say that there's a process to be followed, and if you're going to amend it, it's going to take work and it's going to be going back and getting, and I'm asking Booth, I'm not giving the term agent. I think Booth's a subject matter expert. I get everyone's questions, comments, concerns, but we hired them as a subject matter expert, not us.
Right. And Mr. McGinley, I, not to take, uh, take a side, I, 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 we all feel somewhat like you feel, but also we got a big caution tape from Ms. Booth today. We got a big caution tape from attorney skiing today saying, be careful editing these amounts. And yes, they are not council, it is us, but we also have to make sure we're doing it so that we don't, so that the feds don't come in and say, hey, you screwed this up. We're taking all this money back, then everybody in this audience and everybody listening gets no money. And then we're going to have a real issue. So I just want to make sure, I'm all for changing it, changing amounts. But also if, if you, we give somebody less, they alter the scope of their project and then that project doesn't match those guidelines, then we have an issue. So everybody here had a good point today, but we, all of these ideas also need to fit in the little bucket of following the guidelines. And, and I agree about the score sheets, right? Uh, I agree. I said that right from the beginning. The very first question was, does this align with council's priorities? Did we ever sit down and say, hey, these are our priorities? We didn't. But it was flawed. The whole, uh, it was flawed, but we. But we also have to follow a process so that we're not.
May I add something too quickly? Uh, again, we, we, you know, count, the county is going to be audited on this. Every organization or entity that receives money is going to be audited on this. Uh, they have to comply with what they submitted, and they have to show that that's being done. Um, and also hearing people say, oh, open up the applications again. It was advertised. People had a chance to put their applications in. People did that. But every application should be seen. And, um, and, and, you know, not saying the three or the five or whatever the exact number is, I believe it was five. You know, that, that should be done. But again, it's all going to be audited. Every person getting the money will be audited.
And, and if I could piggyback on this, because I don't want to give you the scare articles from Arkansas, Oklahoma, Nebraska. Where their, the, the, the treasury has already gone in and deemed some projects ineligible and started recapturing monies. Your external auditors will be probably selecting from the pool of sub recipients once you get them. And as a part of just your normal audit, they'll be testing these sub recipient applications to see if they're in compliance with the uniform guidance. I am experiencing, we're working with up to twenty-one, twenty-some counties and cities. We're experiencing, experiencing it across the board. I, one, and I don't have a. My only suggestion or recommendation is those five applications, the more they appear to be, not have been evaluated. But I don't think that's the same as opening up the application process all over again, a new application process. It's just that if those, if there was a system glitch and they didn't get evaluated, that's one thing. But to then say, then to just lose all of the hard work that you all have put in. Um, and, and really, it's, just be careful what you're saying to right now, and as y'all are having this discussion. If I could just caution you, please be careful with that. Um, I would just say, please, please be careful. Because we're getting away from the merit-based and the integrity.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Booth. Thank you. I, Brian Thornton here. I, I don't think we're advocating to start the process all over again, but at a very minimum. The applications that, uh, were, that scored highly. Should be evaluated by all council members, the ones that did not have a chance to evaluate them. Because of technical issues or mistakes made by, whether internally in the county IT or maybe it was at Booth's IT. I don't know. But they should have an, an opportunity to evaluate those apps. And more so. The applications that did not rise to the level of making the list, they should be evaluated. By the council members who did not evaluate them, especially due to technical problems. So, to be fair to everybody, I think that needs to happen.
I'm just thinking out loud, if we don't do something, there was five people who were shunned from this process. So if I were one of those five, I would be looking to assume this county because I wasn't given the opportunity to have my application even seen.
No, I agree. I, I, I think that we need to, we need to score those applications.
Yeah.
They need to be scored. I think that's our first step, is definitely scoring those application that, that weren't seen. Because Ms. Booth, I, I, I believe that, you know, you guys made sure that you did your due diligence, but, uh, Mr. Perry. Ms. McDermott and Mr. Lombardo all took copious notes. I'm looking at Mr. Lombardo's right now. And those projects weren't in any of their notes. So I do think it was definitely missed. So how do we go about just opening a pool? Um, with those five and going from there?
We, I mean, we can get it open tomorrow. I mean, realistically, um, that's not, we can get it open tomorrow. And stick to the five business days, or if y'all want to have more business days than that, um, that, the pool can be open tomorrow. That's easy.
And are we assured, Ms. Booth, are we assured that the numbers are correct? Because there have been so many issues with this whole process, that how do we know the numbers that are graded are even correct?
Because first of all, we went through four levels of QC. This is my first time hearing. I wish that. You know, I'm getting questions now. I wish that we have been told about all these glitches and Mr. Le, Le, I don't want to mess up anybody's name during that process. We went through four levels of QC with raw data, and we did it independently. So one person entered it, somebody else went back and reviewed it. Then we did a cross, uh, colleague, and then finally we did a final review. So we did review after review after review of the scorecards as we put the raw data. We have every scorecard, every score in a, in a database. So we, we did it raw and then summarize. So we're comfortable with the level QC and to even suggest at this point, I guess I'm surprised because I didn't know that that was an issue. I can take, we can take the issue with the applications, they can be opened up tomorrow, they can be available. If y'all want more time, we, I, I, I probably shouldn't stretch it this far, but there were very few pools when. It's one, one council member didn't evaluate any of them. And so the rest of the pools, there was ten council members that evaluated. So it, and this wasn't an issue. So it's only like two pools where we didn't get ten council members. So even, and we have your scores by your name, by your application. So, uh, it's not even a lot of gray area where it could be suggested that. Councilman, we, we never had a pool. We had six council members evaluated. The, the smallest pool had nine. So you all were evaluating.
But I was lost out soon and didn't have an opportunity to look at it again because, so we got it straightened out about the policy statement that I did fill out in the beginning. Because I did the first two pools, I was lopped out of the, from the third on. Threat that I'm not doing this process in order to get your attention. And then, then I finally got a response from Mr. Swett.
Yeah. Yeah, we sent, we, I know I responded to your emails as well. We con, we did a conflict of interest for each pool. And, because that's how, so you couldn't conflict out until you saw the application. So that's why we, we had you do it. You can't conflict out until you know what you're reviewing. So that's, that's, so, you know, whatever you all decide, we can open up. The, the five application pools, if you feel like there should be, just kind of let us know and we'll get that done sooner rather than later. And we'll confirm, we're gonna do this, we're gonna confirm that you all have all, even though we would send a list with it. We'll look at how we can better confirm that you have those five applications.
May I ask one more question? This is Liam McDermott again. Um, Mr. McKinley brought up a point, um, of the people putting in. Again, the organization or entity putting in five percent. Was that taken out of the amount awarded? Um, or do you, were you just giving, the amount that was awarded is that the total amount? Without, uh, taking out that five percent or so that each person would be putting in?
It's a hundred percent. No, it's not. It was, it, the award amount was a total. It wasn't ninety-five percent of the award amount.
A hundred percent, I'm sorry?
It was a hundred percent. It wasn't ninety-five percent of the award amount.
Okay, so if we're, so now we have to, we have to check because that was one of the things that we said we wanted was a match. So now that would mean we're giving out less money as well.
But, but usually. Usually with a match though, that means that you can, you only had a five percent match, so they would just have to have that in addition to. Let's say it was a hundred thousand, they would need to have five thousand dollars. So what the project itself would have been a hundred and five. We didn't ask them, the way that it was worded, it didn't ask them to. Give the total budget to include the match. So then they would have just upped the budget by whatever the five percent was. They just have the evidence that they have the match. And they'll get monitored for that. If they don't have the match in that, but that's on the backend after award.
Well, that is, that's a benefit of having, having you to be able to monitor everything, but.
Yeah.
Um, I, I'm, I'm just a little confused about that. So again, the amount that we're saying that would, they would be awarded. Would not change on that part.
Unless you all decided that it would.
Thank you.
Okay, council, uh, if you guys are okay with the way we'll move forward as we'll open those. We'll open the five that were not graded because I think that that's just common sense that they deserve to be graded if they follow the process. Um, and then we'll just discuss this again in a public work session and move on from there.
And we can just say that, well, that would alter the list. It could possibly.
Yeah, so we'll do that and get an updated list hopefully for two weeks from now.
Yeah, and can we get DAMA taken off of the list?
Yeah, yeah, I, I requested that list. I don't know if they ever sent it.
I haven't.
Okay, okay, we requested a list without, uh, DAMA on it.
Can we open the applications which council members found to be great? It was no fault of Mr. Wescarish. And there was a lot of applications he quit.
See, I, that's the, the last poll. I couldn't get on four hours before it's supposed to end now. That's not something I did. It was on and then it, it ended early.
And not to be honest, so, I mean, that's just not right.
I had an issue with poll three too, but here's, here's my thoughts. These are just my personal thoughts, uh. If we were to open those applications, right, for council members who. Now, if you were one of them, I'll just use that as an example because you admitted you were one of them. Not saying you would do this, but if you know that it scored low and you want it to be approved, you can give it a hundred. You can give it a hundred points out of a hundred points, and then that's gonna really impact the entire process. So I don't know how we get around that without having to redo the whole thing. It, it could push something, it could push something from the bottom of the list to the top of the list.
Well, what stops somebody from wanting to score the five high to knock somebody else out?
Oh.
We, we almost have to redo this whole thing.
Well, what's your option? You could turn around and have those five scored high, and then it knocks people out on purpose. Somebody might be mad about it.
Well, this is, this is the part where integrity comes.
They, they did. They did.
They did. Everybody who was in that portal met all the court requirements.
We had.
And we, and we did, we did get an opinion from Mr. Attorney Skeen. Saying that, um, you know, we set that, we set the process. We, we said what we were going to do and we followed that through this, you know, through. Today, I mean, we have done that.
Liam, could you repeat yourself? You're, you're, you're gargled. So when you talk, we can't, we're just like making out every other word. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I'm, I guess maybe my mic isn't the best. Um, I was just saying that we set the process and Attorney Skeen, you know, did mention that. That was his opinion today. We set this process up, you know, you, uh, months, well, months ago, and we need to stick to that. Why change it now? Why start over?
I, I agree with that, but I just still, I still find, I just find an issue that we, that we didn't have an opportunity to see all the products. That's my, my biggest concern.
Well, I, I was gonna say eleven council members. And even if three decide they want to score high, if, you know, the, the, it's not three of you all. So it's still eleven council members. And I guess the integrity of the process is you're gonna score fairly. It's, it's a whole bunch of what ifs, you know, I, I would just encourage to really.
I think we, so far, we've shown.
Yeah, we thought, we thought the rules of engagement that we were gonna be ethical and fair, so I think we have to just. Apply that to the five.
But I do not want to go back to the beginning.
No. You know. No, the five, five. The five that weren't seen.
So what's gonna happen to the five people that could potentially get knocked out? Are they gonna be irate? I don't know, I'm just asking.
Let's just play it by ear because in all.
Well, there's, there's, well, there's three of the organizations, I believe, have other applications that are submitted. So even, even at the worst case scenario, it would probably will only be two knocked out, if any.
Right. And there's also.
That's true. That's true.
There's all, it's not public comment, I'm sorry. There's also, um, uh. No, no. No, I've been trying to stop everybody from the public from speaking. Um, but Dallas area municipal authority. Um, if a majority votes, there might be a good chance that they get removed, um, too, so that will make room, that can make room potentially for another. Um, another award as well.
This, this list was, was released without us being able to look and make sure that there was any issue like this. That's really what it comes down to. And that's, I've been asking for this list for like two months now. And, and this is the reason why. It has nothing to do with, oh, I want to make sure some organization gets on the list or doesn't get on the list. It's when the list gets released to the public, just like two weeks ago, somebody was sharing a screenshot on Facebook of nineteen projects. That showed up on Ms. Booth's screen during our last council meeting. And they were saying, oh my God, Wes Piston's getting nineteen million dollars when Wes Piston's not even on the list of the approved. Um, so, you know, like it was completely misinterpreted, which is why I think that we need to be really careful with how this list was released. So that nobody misinterpreted it. I think that's really what, what my, my big issue is.
Unfortunately, it continues to be, and now here we are.
Yeah, that, that's over with.
Yeah.
It shouldn't have been released until council had a chance to look at it and raise some of these issues. If we did it that way, I don't think we'd be sitting here tonight talking about all the different things. But we didn't have that opportunity, which I think is wrong. And I think it would have been a lot clearer and more clarified going forward.
But also if we didn't release the list officially, but if we didn't release the list officially, hold on, please. If we didn't release the list officially, we all know that as soon as documents, even if they're marked stamped, sealed confidential. They get leaked within ten minutes of council receiving them. So what, if we didn't leak the official list, then parts of the list would be leaked. And we'd have an even bigger issue.
Well, if that, if somebody wants to leak something, that's up to them. But if you follow the guidelines, which you signed all this information out, and nobody said to council, this is gonna be released. We got a copy. I immediately looked at it and had several questions. And I forwarded them, never got an answer for many of them. And then soon thereafter, I was reading on the internet from the papers what was released. We didn't have a chance.
Now we're reactive now.
Yeah. And that's the problem. I mean, if we could have looked at it and had an opportunity, I think we would have cleared up. The vast majority of what we're talking about here tonight.
And it's, and it's, it's truly not fair to a lot of the applicants too, that, that, that they have been put in the paper. And, you know, some of them are being criticized, I think unfairly, some fairly, that's, you know, your opinion. And I just think that, you know, we, this has been a, a process that has sort of been botched at this point.
And it's, you know, it's part of our fault too. I mean, it's, it's not, Ms. Booth, she knows how to run the process. But there were some things that I think could have been done better, some things that county councils should have done better. You know, like forty-seven percent. That's less than half of the points. If I thought about that a little longer, I probably would not have voted for that.
Did you ever pass somebody in school with forty-seven percent?
Not close. Not close. But, you know, that was thrown at us at the meeting last time. There was no previous discussion on that. And I know what Ms. Booth was trying to do, and that's fine. But if we would have thought about it a little bit more, I think we would have probably said, no, that's not the way we should do it. But again, you know, here we are at this point. Yeah. And, you know.
It's the first time we ever.
Yeah, and it's probably the only time we're all. But it's probably the only time that we're ever gonna have this kind of money that we should share.
Try to invent the wheel before it was ever invented.
Yeah. All right, uh, council, here's what we're gonna do. We will do, we'll open the application for the five that were not scored. Because that's just what's fair, and I don't even necessarily think that that needs a vote because they were, they were overlooked. And they should have, the process should be applied to all applications fairly. So we'll do that. Um, we'll see how that affects our list and we'll revisit at the next work session. Um, if anybody has any questions, any ideas, any thoughts, please email, um, you know, all of us. Copy your colleagues, copy the manager, attorney, Ms. Booth, copy whoever, but we'll, we'll get it sorted out. But I think our first step, uh, you know, is rectifying the five that were overlooked. Um, we are going to move on for the interest of time, um, to the discussion with the county manager search committee. Uh, regarding the ad for Loser and County Manager. You all have it in front of you, and the search committee, I believe, is on the call. Thank you, Ms. Booth, for your time. I appreciate it.
No problem. Have a nice dinner.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Ms. Ader, are you on?
I am.
Okay, great. Do you want to just give a little intro, give just short overview on the ad?
That's an overview of the job description? Oh, on the ad, sure. Um, I mean, basically, it's a combination of previous job descriptions mixed with some of the information from. The county website. Um, there is some information that needs to, you know, this is obviously a draft. There is some information that I received today. Um, so some, some data needs to be adjusted, um, because it's, it's old. So, um, that, that information will be input, um, before it's finalized. Um, I know, you know, the topic of conversation, you know, the, the compensation piece, you know, that's just the, the minimum that's there was just a number, kind of a placeholder that was just thrown in, um, you know, on the fly since we wanted to get this done. I'm aware of the amount, um, you know, the, the fifty-five percent. So that will be adjusted. Um, so, you know, if the council wants to provide their, their comments, um, you know, in regards to the description.
Council, do you have any questions on it?
Should we email the comments to Ms. Adler?
Yeah, um, Ms. Ader, do you, can we email the comments to the search committee?
Uh, yes, as of right now, we don't have, it's, it's all separate emails. We are going to get a group, um, email. Um, and just, you know, I know the council gave an expedited timeline. So, you know, I spoke with HR. We can get this posted through, uh, on Neo Gov quickly and C cap. Um, Jessica is able to do that for us. So once this is pretty much finalized, um, it can be up within twenty-four hours. Um, additionally, I did speak with Chris Hackett briefly today. Uh, there were forty applicants. Out of the forty applicants, there were about twenty-five that were viable. The twenty-five that were viable did come from applications received through the ICMA website. Uh, that is a website that we are going to utilize as well. Um, and Jen Thomas is actually in the works of trying to find out, I guess, one of the previous managers has that access information. So we're trying to, um, get that information.
All right. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
That is for another, that is for another time. Um, I mean, awesome, council, I, it's not on the agenda. Okay, we'll discuss.
Big range.
We can't vote though. That's the thing.
I understand, but they don't have, are, do we tell them what the ranges or do we recommend with the ranges?
No, council makes that decision.
That would be voted.
It does say that in the ad.
Well, understandably, council does vote on the final compensation. However, if you review all the ICMA websites, I am recommending that there is a range put in, the minimum to whatever the maximum is. The discussion needs to be around, I'm aware that, I mean, I don't know if one forty-five is the ceiling. What council needs to clarify and communicate is if that is your line in the sand of compensation, then, you know, we need to know that. If you're willing to go above that, then we need to know that. Um, because you want, I mean, this isn't like the private sector where only a couple of people are privy to the compensation. This is public. People know what Mr. Robertson made. People know, you know, it takes only a bit of research and, and Google lookup to find that information out. So I think it should be clear with a range so that, you know, part of what I plan on doing in this process before even presenting candidates, and I think my other committee members will agree, it's part of what I do in my day-to-day job. You need to manage expectations. So these people in the interview process, they'll be, you know, if, if I can speak to HR council, if I can have a complete picture of what the overall package is, so if one forty-five is your line in the sand and you will not go above that, then having that understanding of what the complete package is, which is in the job description of, you know, 401K, whatever that may be, then that can be managed in the interview process before they even get to you because you may get a candidate that you love. But in the end, they may not accept your offer if they don't like the compensation piece and we don't want it to get to that point.
And right now you have recommendation of one seventy-five to one eighty-five in there. So is that what council wants to see in there? So we need to give some direction here on what we want in the advertisement.
Well, it's not saying one seventy-five to one eighty thousand. It's saying one ten to either one of those on the high end, right?
One ten to be determined, one ten to.
Yeah, the, the to be determined is where we need direction as to, as I mentioned, whatever that, whatever you're going to be willing to go to. If you're, if you're saying that one, it's not going to exceed, say, one sixty, for example, then that's what it will be. And if you're not willing to go above that, you need to make sure that you're not going to go above that. Cause I can tell you, I recruit on roles day in and day out where they give a range. But however, there is wiggle room outside of that top end. Everything's up for negotiation, but this is the public sector. So you may handle things differently.
We say up to one eighty and not put a minimum in there?
Wait, hold on one second. Um, Mr. Del.
According to the charter, one sixteen, three twenty-two.
What is it?
One sixteen, three twenty-two. That's fifty-five percent.
That's right.
Yeah, that, that will. Yeah, I have that number. I said that the one ten was just a number that was thrown in there as a placeholder, just because the job description had to kind of go out quickly. But yeah, it will be the minimum with that one sixteen.
Okay, good.
Sorry. I think that was the issue last time. We set the maximum too high and then there were some people.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, we could say up to one eighty, you know, based on their experience, but I don't want to scare people off of one ten because it's, it's a lot of responsibility. They'll say and not, not apply.
One eighty is too high.
Yeah. I didn't say when I said up to.
Even that, up to one eighty, that means, because then they came in expecting the one eighty, you know. I'd rather keep it lower than that. I'd rather do.
One sixty.
One sixty, that's where mine had.
Well, you can't, you can't vote on it.
Don't vote on anybody.
And, you know, I, I agree with Kevin is that it's up to whatever we think is a maximum limit. And, you know, I said it at the meeting with the, the search committee. The final negotiation happens here with council.
Yeah.
It doesn't happen with the search committee. So that should be clear in the ad. That's where the negotiation is.
It, it, it does. So the candidate salary will be determined by county council. I mean, I just do, I, I don't know. My opinion is maybe we do set a maximum because they're, like, we went through that search process last time and there were council members here that wanted to throw everything but the kitchen sink at some of these candidates, like take all of our money. And that's a, that was scary. So I do think we should set an expectation because we did it last time. And, uh, then we were calling candidates because they told us what they wanted. I was left calling them like, hey, will you take this much money if for some reason we vote for you? So I feel like, uh, we have to, we do have to set a clear expectation, but we can't vote on something right now.
Um, this is a, this is Charlie Shandra. Uh, uh, I agree with, um, uh, Mrs. Adler on this that, um, I think there's, there's two things. I think, um, council's going to, um, send to us additional recommendations. Can, can, we have a tight, a tight timeline. Can we, in the next forty-eight hours, get any additional information you want in the invertment? The other thing that I agree on is the fact that I think, um, I don't think you should lock a number in. I mean, we could advertise to one sixty. If we get, if we get potential candidates that experience exceeds, um, uh, what we have seen or, uh, has additional, um, uh, had additional responsibilities or, uh, can hit the ground running or, uh, can execute in, in, in a, in a, in a very fast way. I, I think we should at least, uh, leave that open or gi- give council the ability, if we need another ten or fifteen thousand dollars for that person.
Uh, Mr. Shandra, Ms. Ader, or even council, um, would, would we be able to, and you guys know what works better in a search, uh, than I do, I'm not the subject matter. But if we said, uh, like includes a minimum salary of a hundred and sixteen thousand, but final salary is commensurate with experience and negotiation of county council. Like, because that's what we have to pay them. So they're not going to make any less than that. Um, but what if we didn't set a cap and said it's just determined by county council? What do you guys think?
I was going to say to her that question. That's her.
But I don't know how well that'll play out though in a search.
I, I think that's, I think that's a mistake because again, as I said, this is not a private entity to where only a few people are privy to compensation. You know, what, what the possibility is. I think you need to be honest and just get in front of it. First off, because you don't want to waste people's time with someone that, you know, they may be in a county, like for example, the Allegheny county manager, granted their population, much more to deal with. They're at about two hundred and twenty-three thousand a- as of this year. So you don't want someone that's already at a two fifty base applying because that's wasting everyone's time because you know, council is not going to vote for that. Just so that you're aware of kind of the process, which I've also laid out to Mr. Shandra and, and Mr. Fusco. This is what I do in my C-level searches, that I give them a survey of written questions. And one of those questions before they, I even entertain a conversation with them is what is their compensation requirement? So even, even if we set the end base at one sixty, if you're saying, if the council decides, yes, as Charlie said, if this is a wonderful candidate, they can hit the ground running. They check nine out of ten boxes, but they would like one seventy. I don't think that's out of the realm of possibility to say if they have the experience. So you'll know ahead of time if their compensation expectations are one seventy or what they are because we're going to ask them beforehand. And I know one of the council pointed out, well, they're going to come in expecting one sixty. As I said, again, that is part of what we plan on doing is managing expectations. And that's part of seeing what their experience is. Are they ready for this? So they may expect it coming in, but I can tell you, once they get in the front of the three of the search committee members, their expectations will be managed. So they will be aware that they may not get the top end of the spectrum.
We would like the flexibility to at least, um, have the ability, if we do find a super candidate, that we, we can come back to county council and, um, um, sell county council on the fact that this person is bringing additional experience and is, is worth the additional dollars that we're talking about.
Agreed.
Quite honestly, with the size of, with the, the size of, of our county, um, I think, I think the salary range is a little bit too low.
Yeah. I mean, the level of experience you're looking for and the responsibility that is under this person, it comes with a higher price tag.
Well, we paid a higher price tag for the last gentleman.
Yeah.
And that didn't work out so well.
You're going to have to recommend three people.
Well, in my opinion, Mr. McGimley, he's not one that I would have chosen.
Well, I think you know my opinion on that also.
Yes.
And that's one reason why I think we have to talk about salary that's in line with what we're doing here in Loser County. And not what California or New York City, whatever it might be.
What did we budget?
One forty-five.
Wait, how much?
One forty-five.
Yes, that's what we budgeted.
That's the one you cut Carl.
Yeah.
Oh, really?
Sorry, Carl. I think as long as the search committee makes it very clear to the candidates that the final decision is up to council and that those numbers are basically just numbers in the air.
Yes.
You know, that we are going to make that determination and, and they really have to, you know, show us that they're worth that, whatever the number is they're asking. I think that's, I think, I mean, you know, if, if that's what, if that's what the, the search committee believes, that there should be a number range in there and they think it should be whatever, you know, whatever Ms. Ader believes, that's fine. I mean, I.
I'm good with that too. This is what she.
And I, can I toss out, can I toss out another, um, out of the box idea? Um, what, what if we also included in, in some form of incentive that would be above and beyond the salary based on the, based on the performance, uh, over certain criteria and KPIs measure, you know, uh, uh, measurable at the end of each quarter, at the end of each year, that that person, um, uh, would attain additional dollars, but it would be performance-based. I, I mean, would county council be amenable to that? I mean, that is used, that's, that is used in, in private industry, but I've seen it used in government.
Yeah. Yeah. And that's all, that's, that all gets negotiated by council after, after the fact. We, uh, negotiate the contract, uh, with the help of our attorney and then the, you know, whoever the candidate is. Um, we can negotiate incentives at that point, but I don't think including them in the, which you guys are independent from county council. So that's just my recommendation because we don't know if we're going to include them. You know, the, those things came after the fact in the last, uh, searches. So.
But here's, here's a little bit of the frustration we experienced in the search committee. It is the fa- is the fact that, you know, we, we would like a little bit of flexibility. Uh, we have a very tight, uh, time window here. We're, we, we realize, we, we understand that we are recommending candidates to council and they're going to make the final decision on the person and the salary. But we also would like the flexibility that when we're, we're speaking with candidates, that we could come up with something that's workable and presentable, uh, to county council.
Well, I think that's what we're trying to, you know, be, I, I don't think you, we want you to bring back five people that are looking for three hundred and fifty thousand because it's, it'll be a waste of time.
Well, there's a cap, there's an actual cap in the charter. Um, now I don't think we should put that in the ad necessarily because that cap is quite high.
That was in the first ad that we had for the search man, for the manager.
It's a big cap.
Yep. We went from fifty-five percent up to ninety-five or ninety percent of the DA salary.
Which is over two hundred thousand.
Yeah. So you're looking at probably a maximum, something in the area of two hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah. So I don't necessarily think that should be capped. Uh, but I do think if, if this is, if what's in this ad that we have in front of us is what they're recommending, then I think if they. Then just go ahead. This is, this is what the three of you came up with. So I mean, I think that this is, it is what it is. Yeah.
This is a rough draft. There's like dramatic layers throughout. Did they prove free or are some of them?
She said it's a rough draft, but if you have any comments, send them all to, um, the three of them. They should have a group email. Uh, there's a ticket in, Ms. Lawrence put a ticket in so that they have a group email, but all three of them have county emails. So it's just their first name, last name that. Yep. Yep. But they'll get, you know how we have LCCM? And if you send it to just that one, it comes to all of us, they're going to get one that covers all of them. But right now, all three of them have individual county.
So you have to send it to each of them individually.
All right, we are going to move on. Um, okay. Thank you guys for being on and for sitting through the ARPA discussion.
Thanks. Thank you.
Have a good night. Uh, discussion regarding ordinance amending the twenty-three fiscal year budget for Loser County, whole home repair. Um, manager's side?
Yeah, I'll take it. I think Mr. Riley's here. Um, but this is on the work session. The actual grant was already approved. We're just trying to get some GL numbers. Uh, I think, you know, your first in the public, this would help, um, some disproportionately impacted. I don't have all the regulations. That's more from Mr. Riley. But with utilities and some things like that and repairs, uh, it has GL numbers in it. Uh, so we have an account set up. Uh, he would have the specifics. It's not foreboding. He did the agendas and metal, but it really is to help, uh, senior disproportionately impacted. And he will be here for the voting meeting.
Okay.
Give more detail.
All right, thanks. If anybody has any questions on that, uh, we can send them to manager's side and Mr. Riley.
We already voted the resolution, right? This is just for a budget.
This is the budget.
The resolutions are in place.
Yeah.
This is the GL number.
Okay. Um, number four, or sorry, does anybody have any questions on that? Number four, discussion regarding ordinance amending the twenty-three fiscal year budget for Loser County State foreclosure grant. Again, this is a budget amendment.
I'll do that.
Uh, so budget finance recommends that council approve the additional funds to the twenty-three revenue expense budgets, uh, regarding the state foreclosure grant. The amount is a carryover amount of one point three million and it is non-general fund and there's no counting that.
Thank you. You had an easy job there, Charlie. No county match. That's what we like to do. Okay. Uh, any questions? No, we'll move on. Okay. Uh, division reports.
So the division reports are attached to your packet. I'm not going to highlight any particular area. But, you know, besides the division reports in the day-to-day, we have, um, coming up on, I believe it's this Thursday, a review call for our credit rating. Uh, I think we talked about before, it's not just the budget process, not just a day that every so long. Uh, so we'll be sitting down with Senator Forrest, probably four or five questions, myself and budget finance, and we'll have a call with, uh, Scott in, in that group. So we'll update council on if there's a change. It's the same. Again, it's not any one thing we did or didn't do. It's just basically a status update every, you know, eighteen to twenty-four months. So oh, yeah, our last year before that in nineteen, I think that it was around the end of twenty twenty-one and now that we're in the twenty twenty-three. oh yeah, our last report before that in 19, I think that it was around the end of 2021 and now that we're in the 2023, uh, it's an update call. So we'll handle that. And if you get a new report, whether it's the same, better, we'll have the information and what changed and how we got there.
Do you foresee a change?
I don't, but I mean, they sent us a bunch of questions. Uh, I will say the one thing and everyone's well aware here is, you know, what we kind of talked about before, um, turnover from the lowest level position to the upper management positions. And that's obviously a concern to anyone on the outside. So we'll answer it, go through that, go through the financials, go through um, all the questions and.
Any other questions, Richard Watts? If not, we're now, we now have a couple of comments. I just looked here. Some of you already spoke and we didn't. Uh, Mr. Griffin?
No, thank you.
You're good. Um, okay. Uh, Diane Calman? You're good. Michelle McKiddish?
So I will be, thank you very much. So I will be brief because if there's anything that I have learned, the thing that you want to not be is the last person before talking before the buffet or the last person talking before you. So my name is Michelle McKiddish and I am with the Greater Pits and Chamber of Commerce. And I am here tonight on behalf of not only myself, but uh, Mary Malone from Hazelton Chamber, as well as Lindsay of Griffin Boylan, uh, the Wyoming Valley Chamber of Commerce. And we're here to advocate for small business. And before I say anything else, I applaud all of you for the work and the effort that you've put into trying to decide where all of the ARPA money goes because it sounds really exciting to start out with 112 million, which by the way, was the fifth largest award in the state, which so congratulations to Loser County for that piece of it. But um, it's very obvious that everyone is working their hardest to make sure that the right decisions are being made. So I do not envy sitting, you sitting in your seats and trying to make some of those decisions. But as I stand here tonight, um, you know, we think about Loser County and the fact that a piece of the puzzle that we're trying to represent are those that are employing 50 people or less than 50 employees. And that ends up being 93% of the employers in the county. And that's really who that small business piece is targeting. And it is really such an important part of what we do. And the idea behind trying to use some of this ARPA funding to help support those businesses, we all know them. We all know we're working with service industries that when you're getting there, they're cutting hours, they're struggling with staff, they're struggling with utility increases, they're struggling with cost of goods, they're struggling with supply chain. We see all of that happening. And many of them, you know, made it through COVID, made it through the investments they needed to make to do business after COVID. They made it through the economic challenges that we're having now, and they're just looking for that little bit of extra help. So if you can find a way, as you're working through the last of these monies to, to take a look at small business, we certainly would love to be a partner in that. You know, we certainly have definitely the right, I think partnerships, the right associations and an ability to reach many of them. And we really commit to you that anything that you can find to put aside for small business, uh, we can do good things with that. And the other side of that coin is thinking about the fact that when that money would go to those small businesses, it would definitely stay in Loser County. It stays as far as payroll, it stays in, you know, the different things that they're doing within the county. And I think that's just so critically important. Because for as hard as it is to decide where some of this money goes, it's very difficult to award it internally in the county, but then keep it here. And that's something that would definitely happen if it were invested in small business. And that also, when I'm looking at many of the other things that we're talking about and how many worthy opportunities there are out there, uh, it seems to be a piece that we're missing right now. We've, you know, we've tried to touch, we've touched public health, we've touched uh, some of the other pieces, we've touched nonprofits, we've touched the, the other jurisdictions. And we can just maybe take a moment and see if we can find a piece of that for small business. We would be forever appreciative.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy Valentine's Day, everyone. I'm going to just throw out some love because I think everyone needs it. Definitely. This has been a long day. I, I commend all of you too. I would never want your position. I'll stick to the creative arts for real. So very, just a brief moment, I just like being that my name or my business has been brought up several times this evening. I feel it necessary to respond. Um, my small business wasn't eligible for these funds. I did not work um, or have an income for a year, if not more. Um, lost pretty much anybody that was working with me through COVID. And over a year, I'm going to say, and due to the COVID pandemic, therefore making my project in fact eligible for these funds. And I crafted a grant surprisingly because this is the first grant I ever wrote. And I honestly don't think I ever want to write another one. Um, I didn't realize you can hire grant writers. So I learned that through the process too. Um, because it was not an easy grant. Um, so this is why it's so important that you consider my application. In no way that I'm arguing that my project's better than another because honestly, this area, it, there's going to be an amazing change one way or another. Like if you look at it, this is all positive. So even though there's some negative energy coming in, this is positive when it comes to like a hundred million dollars going back to our county, whether it's nonprofit, small business, municipalities, every entity, it's, it's just a blessing. So, um, yeah, I think that's about it. I just thank you for your consideration. I, um, I have a question though. So say it comes to the time, now I can see all of you. Um, say it comes to the time where everyone votes. It gets passed, then what? Like, like what happens after that? Like, do we start submitting everything to another portal? Because I love the fact that they brought up the audit because I'm all about being audited. I am very meticulous when it comes to budgets and numbers. So like what, then what happens? Like, does, like, that's why I'm just curious. What's the step afterwards?
Sure. Or I don't want to interrupt your time. Are you finished?
That's, yeah, that's pretty much it. I just, you know, spread in love.
Yeah. Do you want to?
You know, that's about it.
Yeah. And again, I'm not trying to speak to Booth, but I, I think after the awards list, whatever the list may be, is awarded, I would get a grant, you know, execution package, whether it was you personally or your staff, and again, not just speaking, you speaking to everyone.
Yeah.
Um, you know, your staff or finance, you for yourself, figure it out, fill it out, sign it and send it back. And then I would say, my understanding, and I'll work with Booth, is that we submit the first, the first application would be kind of a rolling portal. So like, say your project a quarter is done or allocated.
75%.
Yeah. But you submit that and then you would get those dollars. And then after that, maybe it's like every three months. We're kind of working on it with, because as I said in the beginning, budget finance does not have the staff to sit. We kind of need a set, a set thing after the first tranche. So after the first one goes out, it should be every three months or every six months and we'll kind of work it out. But we would have a paper to agree, uh, we'll work with the legal team on who signs it on council or whoever signed it for the, for the county and, and go from there. It'll all be spelled out once we get there. There's been discussion, but because we're not there, it's not much.
Okay. Well, I was just curious like, because everyone's talking to this point, but nobody's really speaking about what happens after the fact.
Right.
So, okay. Yeah, that's it. Happy Valentine's Day. Make sure you hug your loved ones.
Any other members of the public that are here that wishes me? Go ahead.
Jamie Walsh from Ross Township. Um, I just had a couple of comments as I was listening to you guys talk. Uh, Mr. Thornton said it. He said it, uh, said this is your first time dealing with something like this. So I could imagine it's major undertaking. It's not an easy process. It's difficult. And then you get a third party involved with booth management who doesn't know our county at all, let's face it. And they're trying to, i- it's, it's a tough process. And, and I, I wouldn't want to be in your shoes right now. But a couple of questions I have, um, I know school districts around here got money. Uh, Valley West got 24 million in ARPA funds, not from Loser County. They got it from a federal grant or while it was pushed down through the state. Like Lake Lehman got 3 million, Hannover got 6 million. And I noticed there was a lot of municipalities and boroughs on here. I would like council to check to see if they already received ARPA funds elsewhere. And I don't know if that's been done yet because I know you only had the list a short time. Because I really don't think it's cool to double dip. Um, so that's, that's the first thing. The second thing, Ms. Booth said something about eligible organizations would be subject to FOIA requests. Uh, does that mean that they have to be a government-funded agency to receive funds in order to get this? Because government-funded agencies are all subject to FOIA requests where private businesses aren't. So I just wanted some clarification on that. I didn't understand what she meant by that or if she misspoke. And then the third thing, um, I think these organizations need to come in front of the public and uh, state their case. And you come up with 75 award winners and let them come here and, and speak why they need the money. I mean, this is a windfall for our county and if they're deserving, they should get the money. And if they're, if you all find out in the end that they're asking for a million dollars for something that's really what you saw in an application and what's actually going to be in practice, I think that would be beneficial. And I would start with the, with the small business owners first. Because they're the ones that have been suffering through, through all this. And government officials continue to get paid through the whole pandemic. Most of them while staying home. Um, small businesses are hurt. And I would, I would really, really recommend you start with small business owners and get them in here first and get relief to them. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Joe Granteet points. I just have a question. Did I understand that the amounts can change uh, when you go through this again?
Well, it's not, it's not clear because council members are interested in doing that, but um, we got a big warning about talking about it in public right now, so we have to look further into that.
Okay. Well, I again would like to stress that volunteers of America uh, would not put an American flag up. Uh, they flew the Black Lives Matter flag and the LGBTQ flag. Refused to put an American flag up. And I don't believe that the half of the country that would be against that should have to pay for the donations they lost by doing that. So if they're going to skim any money, that's a good place to start.
Okay. We have Vivian?
Ms. Rado, I ju- I just had a question. I had a question. Um, I know in the beginning when we talked, the list that was put out in the newspaper about the rewards amounts and all that, y- you said that it wasn't um, set in stone, that they weren't like the actual, I, I, I don't want to say something wrong here, that they weren't actually the ones, you know, it wasn't set in stone that they were going to get those amounts. But yet one of the, um, I don't know which one it was, but they said that the businesses that showed up in the paper would be getting money. And my concern is that the Dallas Admissible Authority is under criminal charges. So that would user automatically pulling that, that out or are you leaving um, the Dallas Water Authority in?
That was the list of the highest scoring applications.
Okay.
We have five more, we have five more applications to score. We asked for the list without DAMA in it. Um, it's not approved. The list is not approved. Those are the scores.
Okay. So there's going to be a new list.
There will be an updated list.
Okay.
DAMA is not going to receive any money. We're not going to vote DAMA receiving.
I, I saw that and I was like, oh my. Um, I just, I just had one other question. Um, the, the other, the townships in the borough and all that, like Jamie had said, they all received their own ARPA money. And my, i- it's my feeling. I don't know how you feel about it. But they all use their money for whatever frivolous of giving it away, giving it to everybody else. And now they're coming to us and they want the county's money that the county needs to use for um, repairing roads. You know, other things like, you know, even buying equipment that is needed to fix up, you know, fix up federal buildings and all that. So I, I'm kind of like, why are, if they already got their money and they, and they did get a lot of money that they could have done the projects they needed to do, but instead they gave this money away. So I, I'm hoping that yous are looking at that too, that you're not giving to the, you know, to these places that's already received their own ARPA money and wanting more now. And that's all. Yous have a good night.
Thank you. You too.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I wasn't privy to uh, the first half of the discussion on the ARPA money from the work session, but I would like, uh, I have three questions and I'll listen for the answers when I'm done asking my three questions. One is, uh, this, as I said in my first public comment, the city of Hazelton applied for $995,000 and then for another uh, award for $24,000 for parks and recreation. Uh, that leaves, that's over a million dollars. And Hazelton City received over half a million dollars for their land bank before the 96 million was uh, deliberated on by council, uh, before they even hired Booth, I think. So my question, my first question is, is council going to actually consider giving the city of Hazelton money? Considering that you guys gave 500,000 to their land bank and they are hap- they also happen to be sitting on $14 million of their own ARP money. So I don't think it is fair to the rest of the 75 municipalities uh, that, you know, they already got their money for one thing. And I think the other municipalities uh, deserve, you know, like I said, you guys said from the beginning of the first one, one award per each municipality. That's my first question. Second question is with regards to the uh, manager search. Uh, is the manager search committee and council considering other home rule counties? Uh, I'm looking at Erie County right now and Lehigh County. And if you guys saw the salaries that the, their respective county managers are making, Erie County is making 120,000, their county executive and Lehigh County is making somewhere in, in, in the vicinity of between 110 and 120. And they are fellow third-class county home, third-class home rule counties. So even going by 1, 140,000, you're going over 20,000 or uh, 20 or $30,000 over what their managers are making. So I would take that into consideration. Now I understand they're both elected positions, elected executive positions and our manager is appointed. I get that. So I think that should be taken into consideration. Last but not least, as far as the uh, committees and, and boards go, I would like to ask uh, the vice chair of, because he's the chair of the ABC committee, if he's going to interview for the Blighted Property Review Committee, since that's been dormant for about, since the beginning of COVID. Those are my three questions, Madam Chair, and I'll listen for the answers. Thank you very much.
Well, let her hear what I get in application interview. Exactly.
We have no applications. Um, I can't give a unilateral decision on what we're going to do about Hazelton.
Could I say something?
Go ahead, Michelle.
I, I think we all sat here numerous times, don't say we're going to give the one entity once. I think that was spoken about many, many times. So I'm just answering that.
Okay. Thank you.
And in regards to the two county managers, I think we should solicit them for about 20 grand. I came to the meeting here, the search committee meeting, and I suggested that at the voting, that you first go out and look at the other six or seven county, uh, home government and, and look at what the, you might be able to take some away.
One more, one more. Matthew Crone?
Hey, hello. Are you able to hear me?
Yes. Please state your name and the municipality you reside in.
Uh, good afternoon. My uh, name is Matthew Crone. I'm from Freeland Borough. And I just wanted to talk about the ARPA funding. I first want to thank you folks. Uh, you know, people say $8,000 is a big amount of money, but for the number of hours that you spend in the meetings and outside of the meetings, it's very difficult. And with that said, I do have some criticisms. Uh, this ARPA process was far from perfect at several stages. So I don't think that digging in just now, just for the sake of digging in and being stubborn, is necessarily the right thing to do. There are some very valid questions that only came out after the evaluation phase. Right? So number one, why could any applicant be allowed to act as a pass-through applicant for a separate entity that was apparently unqualified to apply on their own? We know what we're talking about. It was in a Times Leader. It's the Kirby Park project that was, that was applied for under the Jewish Alliance. That seems a little disingenuous to the process. Number two, why were the scoring parameters, specifically the county's priorities, not announced in advance in order to allow the applicants to tailor their responses? We had to guess what those were apparently. Uh, number three, the application itself, if you didn't fill one out, it had small boxes where you could enter 250 characters or 100 words. Why? Why? You, you couldn't necessarily explain some of these projects adequately in that space. It, it just seemed unnecessarily strict. Uh, number four, apparently there were. Uh, number four, apparently there were technical issues which prevented some of the applications from even being seen. Quite frankly, Ms. Booth was a little bit arrogant in her response that it couldn't have possibly been her system. But obviously it was. Who are these five applications? So in light of this, I would call the whole system into question. As somebody who works in consulting and technology, has the scoring data actually been independently reviewed and verified to ensure that the correct scores were in fact applied to the correct applicants? All it takes is for one row to be changed or moved or deleted from a spreadsheet and it throws off everything below it. So I would really take a look at it if I were you. Uh, what, and if you're going to review those five applications, why not review all the applications which any, any member of council wasn't able to review for any reason? Maybe they were sick, maybe they were lazy, but as it was mentioned, one or two can really drive the average score up or down significantly. So if you're going to look at any of them, I think you should consider looking at all of them. Next, when will the full list of the applicants, their assigned polls and the details of each individual application and score be released to the public? You see a name of an organization and you think you might have an idea of what they might be talking about doing, but you really don't know. And you're not experts in the ARPA rules, right? I think you'll admit that. I'm not. I'm not sure if Ms. Booth is. The county should not waste time requiring residents to fill out write-to-no request to get this information. It'll be posted tomorrow. And just the, the last thing is, uh, how could a project related to stormwater, which is referenced forty-two times in the January sixth, be ineligible? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public? Hearing none, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
One comment to board. Only because you hear it over and over. No, help the seniors. Hey, we would like to help the seniors. But there are eligibility requirements that they must meet in order to be able to receive some of the aid. I truly believe that, you know, when we get to that part of the process, we're going to put money aside to help people who are eligible, seniors or low-income. But they have to be eligible. They can't, they're not eligible because they're old, because I would be eligible. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. McKinley. We have a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second? Happy Valentine's Day. Have a good night, guys. Hey, guys, great job. Nine thirty on the dot. Good work.